I'd like to bring to order the Santa Fel City Council meeting of Monday, May 20th, 2019. Ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry we were a few minutes late. We got tied up in a closed session, so apologize for that. And welcome this evening. Closed session, we met in closed session. Madam Senator Attorney, did we have any...
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you very much. We'll move to open time for public expression. What this is, is an opportunity for you to come and address us on matters that might be of concern to you that aren't on this evening's agenda. Since they're not on this evening's agenda, we won't be able to take action, but nevertheless we'll be interested in what you have to say if you'd like to present yourself. Sir.
Evening, folks. My name's Matt Butler. I operate the Santa Fel Yacht Harbor here in town, and I'd like to talk to you about the closing of the showers at Ritter House. And it's caused quite a problem for me because I have showers for my tenants, and I now have a nonstop stream of folks coming at nine o'clock at night, there till four or five in the morning, using my showers because there are no showers available for them here in town. And I looked into the alternative that has been offered up at Kerner Boulevard, which is a couple days a week for two hours at a time, and that is inadequate and not worthy of mentioning. You know, there are many health concerns that you need to think about before you take soap and warm water away from people. There are many bacterias, MRSA and whatnot, that a good scrubbing can keep in check. There are new funguses around that a good bath can help keep in check, and I don't see the logic or wisdom behind taking soap and water away from folks who can't house and take care of themselves. Santa Fel's, or I should say California's homeless slash drugs slash mental illness problem is a bigger problem than a city can deal with, and I realize it's frustrating. And there are some pretty rough elements in the homeless population here in town. But I think you ought to consult the Marin County Department of Health and some professionals and really think about what the public at large is exposed to when you have a large homeless population not properly bathing. Because we all share the same grocery stores and the same stores with these folks, and a good bath and some soap and hot water is something we shouldn't be depriving people of.
Thank you for your comment. And only for clarity, I'll pass on to you that in fact we have a mobile shower system that circulates throughout the county, so it certainly hasn't been curtailed as you might have suggested. I won't argue with that this evening, but it hasn't been eliminated. I will argue with it. Anyone else? Anyone? In which case, we'll turn to special presentation, and if you'll join us at the... Hi. This is kind of special for Santa Fel and pleased to meet, and meet for the first time, but my pleasure, Amy Wireman. Is that correct?
That's Chris, yes.
And Amy is with BioMarin, and the reason why she is here is that we have a proclamation that I will read. And for some of this will be news, but certainly was good news for BioMarin and I would suggest for our entire city. BioMarin's a real player within Santa Fel. And this is proclamation presented to BioMarin Pharmaceuticals, and it says, "Whereas BioMarin, a global technological company that develops and commercializes innovative therapies for patients with serious and life-threatening rare and ultra-rare genetic diseases, has been recognized by the Forbes Magazine and 2019 list of America's Best Midsize Employer, ranking fourth overall and first among its peers in the drug and biotechnology industry." And whereas, BioMarin is renowned for developing medicines and the first and best of their kind, employing over 2,900 people who are passionate and committed to their work discovering medical breakthroughs and scientific firsts in rare diseases. Many of us know that, right? BioMarin was previously honored as one of the most innovative companies and world's best employers by having an evolving work environment that facilitates individual and teamwork collaboration, something we all appreciate. Their organization is known as a pioneer in spirit and mindset of doing what's never been done before. BioMarin's greatest asset is its people, and their goal is to make a big difference for small patient populations and to tackle tough scientific problems. Whereas, the city of Santa Fel is privileged, honored, and proud to have such an distinguished company located within its city limits. I now therefore, Gary Phillips, Mayor of Santa Fel, do hereby proclaim my sincere appreciation to BioMarin Pharmaceutical as Forbes' one of best, let me get this right, America's best midsize employers, or its impact on the community of service and contribution to the city. I noticed in the paper, and perhaps you might have as well, when this first came down, I thought, you know, that's pretty significant, employer within our city limits, which we're delighted to have, and to be so recognized by Forbes, National Magazine, as I'm sure you're aware, a business magazine. And so that's quite an accomplishment, so I thought it might be appropriate to so recognize you. I'm delighted that we have. There's one other thing I want to pass on, though. It's not in this. A little note to myself. This was some time ago, talking with JJ, who was the president of BioMarin, about the possibility of accommodating Whistle Stop when they were in the throngs of relocation and not sure what they were going to do. And so forth. Whistle Stop is, of course, an important nonprofit organization serving our elderly population in terms of housing, future tense, but housing. And BioMarin stepped up almost without prodding, which is pretty much unheard of, right? It's like, why don't you guys? And go, okay, let's do accommodate Whistle Stop in their operation, including about 40 living units, I'll call them apartments, if you will, in our system right now. And so BioMarin not only is an outstanding employer and recognized by Forbes, but also, I would suggest, an outstanding partner in the city of Santa Fel and some of the things we're trying to accomplish. So we're greatly appreciative, and I hope you pass on our thanks to all of your fellow employees at BioMarin.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I'm going to just say a couple of words to thank you and the residents of Santa Fel for this acknowledgement. It means a lot to us. As a growing company, we've been here in Santa Fel for about seven years, and it's been a great place for BioMarin. And we, as a company, while we're getting recognized, and the recognition was wonderful for us, really, it's for us, the mission of the company, that we all are behind doing what we can to advance medicines and treatments for families, for children who have rare genetic diseases that are incredibly debilitating, and whatever we can do to make their lives better, whether it's through scientific advancements or the drugs that we're producing in Marin County and that we're developing here in Santa Fel, that's really what makes our employees connect with our mission. You know, and of course, it's even better, you know, we like to treat our employees well, and, you know, it's not just our benefit package, it's really like what we do as a company. So, thank you, Mayor Phillips, and thanks to the city of Santa Fel.
A little cloud to be associated with BioMarin.
Absolutely.
My friends here would like to thank you.
Oh, of course, thank you.
Please share that with your colleagues and JJ. Oh, photo. Photo off.
Yes. Is this the right spot?
Oh, that's perfect.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I would like to do one brief introduction and then turn it over to our Public Works Director, Bill Guerin, who I've asked to talk for a couple minutes on a major street segment closure that we have coming up. But before I do that, I wanted to introduce to the council and to the community our new deputy city clerk, who's Brenna Nirmey, who's right here, sitting to the left of Lindsay Lara. Brenna comes to us from Marin County Superior Court, where she worked for 10 years in every department of the agency. I don't know how many that is, but it sounds impressive.
Pleased to report this, first I met.
Most recently, working in the jury services department. She's stated that public service runs through her veins because both of her parents worked in the public sector, and she finds great joy helping people in the community. So I just wanted to point out that Brenna's going to be working with Lindsay in the city clerk's office as our deputy city clerk. Welcome. And then I'd like to ask Bill to talk a little bit about what we think are major closures of street segments along Second and Third as it relates to some SMART construction work that's coming up.
Good evening. As you know, SMART is continuing on their second phase project to Larkspur. Their construction's going very well. They've flipped Francisco Boulevard West, and they're now constructing the tracks on that side of the street where the street used to be, the tracks are now. They've completed Anderson Drive and Rice intersection, so that segment is now open. The multi-use path is going to open soon. But they're now entering a sort of critical phase for Santa Fel, which is the Second and Third Street closure, so they can bring the tracks across to connect with the existing rail and the existing station that is in central Santa Fel. The IJ reported today that they are intending to close those streets from Friday night, May 31st at eight o'clock, through hopefully late Sunday night, but possibly early Monday morning, June 2nd. And that will be closing Second Street. And then the following weekend, June 7th through the 9th, they'll be closing Third Street to do construction on those segments. Those streets will be completely closed to all traffic, so again, Second Street for one weekend and Third Street for the following weekend. We thought about this a lot and decided that the best way to do it is just, you know, pull the Band-Aid off and get this done as quickly as possible. And SMART is intending to be in there. They've done a bunch of work at the transit center and a bunch of work otherwise around the center itself, so they're staged for this weekend closure, not this coming weekend, but the weekend after and the following weekend beyond that. We've coordinated with SMART, with the Santa Fel Police Department and Fire Department, with Marin Transit and Golden Gate Transit, the cities of San Anselmo, Ross, and Fairfax, which will be affected by this because traffic coming from West Marin goes through these streets. And we've done a lot, all that we can in terms of getting out on social media and coordinating our message with the other agencies, so we're all sending the same message out to people through Nextdoor, Twitter, all the various websites associated with this. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that everybody's familiar with it, but this is another opportunity to do that, so I wanted to make sure that we got this out to the public at tonight's meeting. It's possible that the street closure for Third Street, that SMART will not be running trains into central Santa Fel, and they'll create a bus bridge for that weekend, and will likely turn off the Q cutters on Mission, Fifth, and Fourth Street during these closures, so traffic flows more freely in those segments as well. There's a full traffic plan established. There's going to be flaggers out on the street. There's going to be signs everywhere notifying people of these closures coming up. We've got Caltrans to commit to doing some of the freeway signage coming into Santa Fel from the north and the south, so we're doing everything we can to make sure people are aware of this, but we wanted to make sure that this opportunity didn't get passed and make sure that you're aware as well.
Thanks, Bill. I know that was a sort of a major headache, and certainly at SMART, we had some discussions about it as well, and I would hope that those in the audience, including those perhaps might be listening, are aware and will spread the word, because not everybody will get it, and it's going to be a trying couple of weekends, but thanks for all you've done to get the word out as best you can. John, you have a comment?
You might have said this, but on Second Street, is it going to be from Lincoln to Heatherton? Where's that stop going to be? Because Second Street, I'm assuming all Second is closed up to the Miracle Mile, so...
Thank you for that clarification, council member. No, it's not. It's going to be from Heatherton to, well, I'll go the other way, from Tamalpais to Heatherton, so traffic will be able to divert onto Tamalpais northbound and Francisco Boulevard West southbound. And then the same with Third Street. We're going to close it at Heatherton and open it again at the other side of Tamalpais. Just one block, exactly. Thanks.
Anything else? Do you have anything further? In which case, we will now turn to the consent calendar. That is items 5A through 5D, unless someone wished to have an item held. Anyone from the public who wished to address us on these items, which will be covered with a single motion in a moment. Close, public, come back for further discussion, or a discussion, and if not, perhaps a motion.
I move passage of the consent calendar.
Second.
Good, and second. Roll complies.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamble.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Item carries 5-0, and we'll now turn to public hearing on flavored tobacco ban ordinance, item number six. Evening.
Evening. Ethan Guy, Principal Analyst for the Community Development Department. So I'm here to talk about the flavored tobacco ban ordinance that's coming back for a second time. We came initially on April 15th to city council to present an informational report and a draft ordinance. At that meeting, council directed staff to return with considerations, considering modifications to the presented draft ordinance to include a language providing an exemption for businesses that are primarily tobacco retailers and do not permit individuals under 21 years of age on the premises, and also providing additional data on analyzing the effectiveness of flavored tobacco bans and methods for youth access to flavored tobacco. So today, my plan is to kind of hit those two main topics. At the end of my presentation, I'll also pass it on to Dr. Matt Willis, the public health official for the county of Marin. So just a quick, little update on some things that have happened last week through legislation happening at the state level. The big one right now is SB 38. So SB 38 was in Appropriations Committee last week, and it was voted out of the Appropriations Committee, and it's currently on the Senate floor, but in appropriations, it was amended. In that amendment, the SB 38's original language prohibited retail stores and vending machines from selling flavored tobacco products, including nicotine cartridges. The amendment included an exemption for tobacco products with patents before January 1st, 2000, and for products that are not menthol-flavored, sorry, menthol-flavored products. They have to meet both of those classifications. Additionally, the amendment included an exemption for tobacco products for non-electric hookah tobacco. If it passes through the Senate floor, the next step would need to go to the Assembly, and it would go through the normal process through the Assembly from there. Additionally, some more updates that have happened since we last met. The Marin County Grand Jury issued a report called Vaping and Under-the-Radar Epidemic. This was released on the 16th. The main findings, this is the very short version of it, they recommended a four-pronged approach to address youth tobacco use, which included limiting the availability of flavored tobacco, education of students, teachers, and parents, enforcement of the new tobacco sales bans that are currently in place in other jurisdictions throughout Marin, and then finally, supporting students already addicted to nicotine. So kind of hitting back on a few of the topics that were presented during the last meeting that you had asked staff to come back with. The first one is really looking at the effectiveness of a flavored tobacco ban. Staff, what we did is we looked at two main reports. The first report is entitled Flavored Tobacco Product Use Among Youth and Young Adults: What If Flavors Didn't Exist? This report is from the University of Texas School of Public Health. What they did is they analyzed two youth surveys of quite a few individuals that had answered questions related to e-cigarette use. Their main findings from that report were twofold. First, restricting flavors in tobacco products would not eradicate e-cigarette or other tobacco use among young people. However, there is a potential for substantial reductions in the prevalence of young people's e-cigarette and other tobacco use that seems high if flavors were removed. Secondly, the second report was Influence of Flavored Cigarette Ban on Adolescent Tobacco Use. This is an NIH report, and what that did is it analyzed the impact of a federal 2009 nationwide ban on flavored cigarettes, and looked specifically at youth tobacco use from data from the National Youth Tobacco Surveys from 1999 to 2013. The main findings from this report were that while the 2009 flavored cigarette ban did reduce youth tobacco use, the level of that decrease in youth tobacco use was likely hampered due to the availability of menthol cigarettes and other flavored tobacco products. And I'm happy to go into the details about all these if you'd like as well. The other data area in which the council asked us to look at was youth access to flavored tobacco. The main report that we looked at was how do adolescents get their e-cigarettes and other electronic vaping devices? These are from, these are from the FDA. They recently put out draft guidance for the enforcement of the second piece of that 2009 tobacco ban. In this report, the main findings show that 78.2% of youth own a vaping device, 72.8% had used someone else's device in the last 30 days, and the main sources for which the youth that responded to the survey said that they identified and received their e-cigarettes, the first being from purchasing from a store online, the second from buying from another person, and then the third, they gave someone money to purchase the e-cigarettes for them. Additionally, the FDA also included information on undercover enforcement during the summer of 2018. Those efforts resulted in more than 1,300 warning letters and civil money penalty complaints to retailers illegally selling flavored tobacco to minors. Their results indicated that age restrictions alone on flavored tobacco products do not act as a significant deterrent to access of these products. So the ordinance that's presented today includes amendments to SRMC Chapter 1815, I'm sorry, 815. The two main changes, first is for a flavored tobacco ban, and what would need to happen as part of these amendments, would we need to update Section 815.005 in our definitions to add several new definitions pertaining to flavored tobacco products, additionally expanding the definition of tobacco product to include products from both tobacco leaf, which is currently defined in the ordinance, and expand it to include nicotine. In the staff report, there's a red line version and a no red line version, so it should show all these changes in that as well. Additionally, we would need to include a new section, .110, which is a prohibition against sale or offer-for-sale of flavored tobacco products. This section would be required specifically outlining the ban on sale or offer-for-sale of those products. Additionally, what is also before council are changes requiring a pharmacy ban on tobacco sales. This would not be solely for flavored tobacco, rather for all tobacco sales. Again, we would need to update .005 to include a definition for pharmacy, and then additionally, we'd have to add a new section prohibiting against tobacco product sales at pharmacies. Additionally, what is included within these amendments is an exemption for certain businesses, and this is Section 815110 subsection C. This includes an exemption for flavored tobacco ban for businesses that meet the following criteria. First, the business cannot permit anyone under the age of 21 to be present or enter the premises at any times. Second, they must verify the age of all persons upon entry to the premises. And third, they must generate more than 50% of their gross receipts annually from the sale of tobacco products and paraphernalia. Additionally, as part of this ordinance, we're asking for an effective date that's six months after the ordinance was, after the ordinance is enacted. The purpose of this delay is twofold. First, it allows retailers who are seeking an exemption to make any changes necessary to be in compliance with that exemption. Secondly, it allows retailers who currently have flavored tobacco stock but are not seeking exemption to be able to sell their existing inventory. As part of the staff report, we looked at fiscal impacts primarily. We looked at it from three different areas. We looked at direct costs through enforcement. We looked at the economic burden and societal costs associated with tobacco use, and we also looked at tax revenue loss. The first area of fiscal impact for enforcement, we found that no additional cost to the city would be needed for an increased enforcement due to a flavored tobacco ban. The enforcement is conducted as part of an MOU with the Marin County Sheriff's Department, and those funds are provided, the funds for enforcement are provided through this county's general fund monies, so there's no direct cost to the city for an increased enforcement. Additionally, we look at the economic burden of tobacco use. We looked at a report called The Cost of Smoking in California from 2009. This report estimates $139 million for the economic burden associated with smoking in Marin County, which equates to $551 per Marin County resident at the time of the report, as well as $4,814 per smoker. What the economic burden is really looking at are costs associated with healthcare, costs associated with hospital visits, those more larger societal costs that are applied that aren't necessarily direct costs with purchasing tobacco products. One thing to note is that this report is not adjusted for inflation or increases in healthcare costs since 2009. Finally, staff looked at the tax revenue reduction associated with a flavored tobacco ban. To do a little context setting, as part of SB 38, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration performed a fiscal analysis on that flavored tobacco ban statewide. What they found is that the estimated tax revenue loss for fiscal year 2021 was estimated to be $235 million in excise taxes statewide, as well as $54.5 million in sales taxes statewide. As staff, we performed a comparable analysis to what was done in San Francisco, and what we found is a fairly large range. We estimated that a potential sales tax revenue loss would be around $25,000 within exception, an exemption included within the ordinance, to $100,000 without an exemption. But one thing to note is that there are substantial limitations with this analysis due to the uncertainty around tobacco use and individual behaviors. The first one being that flavored tobacco users may switch from affected retailers to exempted retailers or out-of-town retailers. In either case, the changes to what that impact on the tax revenue loss could be different. Additionally, existing flavored tobacco users may replace flavored tobacco consumption with non-flavored tobacco products. Additionally, a reduction in tobacco use would likely lead to a corresponding reduction in that economic burden associated with those lower healthcare costs. So what is being put forth today? We're asking the council to conduct a public hearing and pass the ordinance to print. There are four main options. The first is to adopt an ordinance as written. The second is to adopt the ordinance with modifications. The third is to direct staff to return with more information, and finally, the council could decide to take no action. And with that, I'd like to pass it on to Dr. Matt Willis, the county of Marin Public Health Officer.
Thank you for your report. Dr. Willis, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Good evening, community. I'm Matt Willis, Public Health Officer. I want to start by congratulating BioMarin, who's been a friend to our work at Health and Human Services, and demonstrates excellence in treating diseases, and we're hoping that we can also demonstrate that same level of excellence in preventing diseases, and that's the purpose of this conversation tonight. One of the most interesting things about my role as public health officer is the diversity of issues that I get to address with you all, whether it's measles, or wildfire smoke, or flooding, disaster shelters. And we come together to address those issues to try and find the best solution. Sometimes the answers are not obvious and self-evident, and it's really through the civic process of dialogue that we find the best solution. I think tonight is an important example of that, and I recognize that this is not necessarily a cut-and-dried issue. a cut-and-dried issue. And I appreciate that we're going to have a variety of inputs tonight. Tobacco, with that diversity of public health topics that we're always dealing with, tobacco control remains always one of our highest priorities. And that's because tobacco is the leading cause of preventable death in the United States, accounting for about a half a million deaths annually, which is about 1,500 deaths every day. And that's partly because of the history. We're dealing with people who are suffering from diseases that are the result of tobacco use throughout their lifetime. And it's an invitation to us to sort of think about what were the measures that we could have taken during those people's lives that could have prevented that from occurring? That costs for Marin County of the deaths that we're experiencing and the, and the healthcare costs and loss of productivity related to tobacco is about $168 million a year. So if we're thinking about the loss of tax revenue, we need to look at that in that context of the larger social costs of tobacco use. It's not every day that policymakers can, with, you know, this kind of conversation and some pen strokes, actually save lives. But in tobacco policy, it's clear that lives are saved and we're strengthening our protections. Because that contribution of tobacco and nicotine to so many other leading causes of death, heart disease, lung disease, cancer, and stroke, which are individually the leading causes of death, many of those, in fact, many cases of those are actually, the root of those is tobacco use in someone's life. This is an area where you do much more, and I think we would do more in the area of prevention to, to protect people and save lives than physicians do. One of the things that attracted me to public health was after spending eight years as a clinician, trying to treat diseases after they'd occur, the desirability of actually moving upstream to try and prevent them. And that's where I think we work together as policymakers. One of the reasons we're having this discussion, that this has, and it's been alluded to, is that this is a rapidly evolving problem for which we are called to respond locally. In Marin, the number of children reported vaping more than doubled in the last two years. From in 2016, the California Healthy Kids Survey found that about 1 in 10 children were vaping on a regular basis. When we did that survey again two years later, that was, that number was about 1 in 3, 28%, almost 30%. And this is following national trends. And that was true, that increase was true for all three studied groups, which is 7th, 9th, and 11th graders. The highest numbers were for 11th graders, but we saw increases in all those three age groups. At the same time, the environment in which we're making the decisions is changing as we, you know, SB 38 was mentioned. Another important recent development is that the grand jury report was released on Thursday. That really offers us a roadmap to how we might respond. That report was released after the draft ordinance, after your language was developed, but before we're hearing it. So hopefully that's an opportunity for us to realign our approach. And they mentioned, you know, just to recap, the four, among their two, two prongs of their four-pronged approach for the county, one was to limit the availability of flavored tobacco, and, and the second was to enforce new tobacco sales bans. Also, last week on Wednesday, the FDA was actually found guilty by a federal circuit court judge to fail to regulate the vaping industry. In his statement, Judge Grimm stated that, quote, "Instead of addressing public health concerns associated with tobacco use by minors and others, the FDA exacerbated the situation by stating, in essence, that manufacturers can continue to advertise and sell products that are addictive and that target a youth market at a time when minors' use of tobacco products and e-cigarettes is at an epidemic level and rising." So we're dealing in an environment where we are trying to find local solutions, partly because of a failure of federal and state action. So it's compelling us to think about how shall we respond? We cannot look to assume that federal regulations are, are protecting us. We're dealing with an industry and a product that has moved so quickly, from, from my perspective as a public health officer, this has moved into our communities so quickly that we haven't actually had the ability from, from the science side and from the regulatory side to actually catch up with it. And because these products are so addictive, we're having more and more people using them, and those that use them continue to use them. So we're seeing an ever-increasing amount of use. So there's a tension for us as policymakers between the, the speed and the velocity of the increase in use in our communities and our ability to actually understand and regulate for, for health. So the question is, how will we respond? As a physician health officer, I can help offer some of the health implications for flavored tobaccos, including vaping. I'll focus on the health implications of vaping. I hope by now the health consequences of tobacco products themselves are well-understood. I simply, you know, put simply, you know, tobacco specifically contributes to pathology in almost every organ system and is the leading cause of preventable death. There's no form of, of tobacco in any amount, in any form, that is not harmful. So it's sort of unique in that way. So let's talk about vaping. First, the use of e-cigarettes is higher among high school students than adults. There was a recent study published in the Journal of American Medical Association, JAMA, that showed that among followers of Juul's social media, their tweeting feed, 80%, 81% were under age 21, and 19% were adults. So this is a product that is categorically, actually, the nicotine-containing vaping products prevent, it's illegal for young people to use them. And yet, four out of five people who are actually following their social media site are young people. It increases, among young people, there's good evidence that it actually increases the risk of cigarette use. Because it is a habituated product, you, you, children get into the process of, on a daily basis, on a regular basis, inhaling a substance that is feeding an addiction. And that the shift from a vaping product, which they may, these are children who may never have decided to smoke cigarettes, but vaping, the industry has been very clear in marketing to them and falsely promoting this as a benign product that has actually rendered many young people addicted to this. And the shift from vaping to cigarette smokes is, is a much smaller step for them at that point, at some point in their lives. The other issue, I think, is that vapor itself, and we've talked about this before, I think, here, is not actually just vapor, right? I think we were taught, we were taught early on that this was just a benign substance. When the CDC and others actually look at the thousands of products now that are put in vaping devices, what they find is actually a very complex blend of substances. And because of the lack of regu, regulation, it's not even that clear what's in different substances. And they found carcinogens, including heavy metals, obviously, high, high doses of nicotine, bisacotal, which is a substance that can cause a, a disease in the lungs called popcorn lung because of the characteristic appearance on an X-ray, and other unknown compounds. Nicotine itself, to get to that, we know that the rates of, the, the amount of nicotine in vaping products, especially Juul, can be very high. In fact, two, two packs of cigarettes for one Juul pot about equivalent. We know that nicotine affects brain development all the way through age 25. So one of the concerns I have is that even if we did successfully, which I don't, which I will argue that we cannot, but if we were even able to cut off at age 21, we still have that period of vulnerability in terms of brain development for people who would be able to legally purchase these products. Nicotine affects mood, attention, and performance, and it's being rebranded by the CDC as a brain poison to try and help people understand the consequences of nicotine. Nicotine is highly addictive. Everyone knows that. I've experienced that in my own public health practice and my own primary care practice from patients who might have been struggling with addiction to alcohol or opioids. You know, many of the cases, actually, the most difficult addiction they were wrestling with was their addiction to, to nicotine. And it was obviously, in, in many cases, was cigarette smokes that they, that they were amusing to, to, to meet that addiction. There's also a problem of secondhand vaping. If we can accept that the vaping, vapor itself can be harmful and contain nicotine that is addictive, then we have the same questions that we have with tobacco that relate to vaping, which is what do we do about those people who have not chosen to vape but are nearby when that plume is exhumed, right? And we've seen that, we've all seen that, when someone's walking down the street. And it's, it's, it's a remarkable, I mean, you really see how much vapor there actually is because we can see all of it, unlike tobacco, which sometimes dissipates much more quickly. Another concern is that THC and cannabis are also easily added to vaping devices and is one of the ways that young people are actually, actually to, to become intoxicated on cannabis. It's also difficult to detect and identify use. So those are some of the, the health concerns specifically about vaping. I'm, you know, I'd love to, if you have any questions, I can answer those. I'll final, I'll finish with some comments about the policy. As Public Health Officer for the county as a whole, I'm not only interested in the health of San Rafael residents. I think one of the important pieces of context here that came up with the, with the grand jury report is that this is, we are trying to, as a county, move a movement forward that is as the strongest public health policy we can. In November 2018, the County Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance that had no exemptions to a flavored tobacco ban. Since then, five jurisdictions have followed suit, Sausalito, Cordero Madera, Larkspur, and San Isomo. We are in conversation with other cities and towns to have that same high level of, of protection. That is following other jurisdictions outside of Marin. We've seen regionally, San Francisco, Sacramento recently passed an ordinance where they had 400 tobacco stores that were advocating, as we'll experience tonight, for, for, for their right to sell these products. But from a public health standpoint, the decision was made to actually, you know, move forward in Sacramento with an exemption-free tobacco ordinance. Same with, with Oakland recently. So one of the concerns I have is that if, and if the ordinance as written tonight here in San Rafael was passed, it might undermine, or it would very clearly undermine, our effort towards a county-wide approach, which has obviously benefited in terms of the public health value for protecting our community, but also would, would allow us for a much simpler enforcement strategy across the county. If San Rafael ends up being the only county that has, the only city that has exemptions, we also are concerned that San Rafael will become sort of the go-to place for people who are seeking access to these products. We learned from one of the studies presented here tonight that over a third of, of young people who are using these products, and again, 1 in 3 Marin County youth are using these products, are accessing them through an adult, right? So the idea that you can prevent access to young people by preventing young people from entering an establishment, the evidence is that does not occur, right? That we actually do have young people using products that they're acquiring from young people, from, 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 from adults. So I'm just going to summarize the, the findings of the, the two findings I think are most important from the grand jury report. Recommendation five, by the way, I'm on, I have to be responsive to this. You know, they, they write the report and they say, you know, certain agencies and people have to respond. So I'm on the hook to respond to this report, as, as is the San Rafael City Council. So number five, recommendation five was all municipalities in the county that have not banned the sale of flavored tobacco products should do so within the next year. That's recommendation five. Recommendation eight is all law enforcement agencies should coordinate the enforcement of sales bans on flavored tobacco. So this, I guess in conclusion, this represents an opportunity tonight to realign our progress countywide, following the recommendation of public health and all of our partners in the Cancer Society, the Heart and Lung Association, the Medical Society, and many others, to either pull back and allow time for further review and discussion of this, or to move forward with a modified ordinance that is strong as it can be and aligns with the county approach. I know there are others who would like their perspective and their support. I'm open for any questions.
First, thank you for joining us this evening and helping us address this trying issue. So we, we appreciate that and certainly respect you and your experience in this area and more broadly as well. So thank you for that. Just for the, the audience, the way this works is we will ask some questions of staff, including Dr. Willis. Then we'll open up for public comment, hear your comment, and close, and then come back for further discussion here. So just in case you're wondering. So like I said, thank you, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, and I, and I may ask staff to clarify if there's a question that I don't have an answer to.
Sure. Leave that up to you. Let's, let's address this as best we can, and if that's the right approach, let's, let's do that. I appreciate that. Start with questions here. John, do you have a question?
Sure, sure, I'll start. Thank you, Dr. Willis, for, for joining us tonight. And I appreciate the fact that you've come back to us when, when it concerns to these vaping issues. But I think this is a much larger issue, and, and please don't take this question as something snarky to the extent of, we're talking about the causes of illness and health problems in our community related to tobacco use, and vaping as one delivery method for that. If everybody's putting forth these flavored tobacco bans and the information that we're hearing is that the access will still be there because these are legally federally, on the federal level and the state level, legal products for people to obtain, and just by going onto the internet, anybody with a debit card can buy them without putting in, you know, more than, here's my birthdate and, and going ahead and getting access to it. Why are we just addressing the flavored products? Why isn't, why is, is this, is this the easy thing to do? Why aren't we banning tobacco altogether? Why aren't we back banning nicotine products altogether in the county? Why are we just doing this? And, and you might have an answer for it, but if the problem is people are getting sick and people are dying, my father, of, of nicotine use and tobacco use, then why aren't we banning that altogether?
That's an important point you're making, I think, to remind ourselves that we're really talking about flavoring. All right, I mean, the way I think of this is that, you know, we're, we're trying to balance adults' privilege or right, adults' right, but to, to a flavored experience versus the, the contribution of that flavoring to what we know is harmful, which is young people using, right? So the fact is, is that flavoring is a contributor to new people choosing to use tobacco and becoming addicted, right? And we can address that through policy, right? For people who want to use vaping devices for smoking cessation, and there's no evidence yet from the FDA or any others that it's actually a proven method for smoking cessation, but I know that some people do benefit in their own stories and their own experiences, non-flavored vaping products are still available, right? So we are only talking about provisions on vaping. So if we step back, it's, it's really important to sort of recognize that what's at stake here is an adult's right to a flavored experience, right? Compared to what we know to be the contribution of, of flavoring to enticing young people who are much more vulnerable to that sort of, the, the marketing around flavors. I mean, bubble gum, unicorn poop, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot this, you know, really specifically marketing to young people around flavoring. So I hope that partially answers your que, and then I guess the other part of the answer is we're trying to control what we have control over, right? We have control over what we implicitly or explicitly promote in our own, in our own walls, right, in our own community. We can't control the internet right now yet, right? And so, but that doesn't, we know that some fraction of access comes from our own community. And we can, we can act, and the, you know, the University of Texas study demonstrated that if you cut off that supply, you do get fewer people using.
But if the ultimate goal is to reduce tobacco use or to eliminate tobacco use, if they, if we were, if you were, you know, the king and you could buy edict to dictate this, your, your goal would be there would be no tobacco use whatsoever, if, if I'm understanding, you know, your, your comments today and how dangerous this is. Does the county, do the cities have the ability to, instead of a flavored tobacco ban, do an all-out tobacco ban? And I'm not being, you know, again, I, I'm being serious in my question. Do they have that ability to do that? Could the county, instead of initiating a flavored tobacco product ban, could they initiate a full tobacco on all unincorporated parts of the county that no one could sell tobacco?
I mean, I think one, Beverly Hills took that step recently. That seems, you know, we're, I mean, this is a personal, where we balance, I think, you know, the fact is that there are many people who have been rendered addicted to tobacco. And an outright ban is something that we would have to be really thoughtful about whether or not we're compromising the rights of those individuals to that product that they have become addicted to. This is different. We're talking about flavors.
Right, I, I understand that. But if, if a person, if a person has the right, an adult has the right to access a flavored product, what we've seen is that youths are going to get access to that flavored product, or they'll get access to a non-flavored product. I grew up with many kids in my high school that were, you know, taking, you know, skull wintergreen. You know, we were in Nevada, we were the Hicks, you know, we, we had the chewing tobacco kids, with the ring in the back of their jean pocket. And that was 35 years ago. So, you know, kids are going to move to the way that they want to move to. And if there, if there is access to anything, if they've started with a Juul, or if they've started with another e-cigarette product, and it's available, and that's, that's, that's my point, if, if it's available, they're going to get access to it. It's regardless of what, what it is. Or is the next step that we ban flavored Alka-Pops, is it the next, because adults... Or is the next step that we ban flavored Alka-Pops, is it the next, because adults like to drink their Bartles and James, you know, California coolers, if that's even still being made these days, and dating myself? But that's where kids started with a lot of alcohol, because it was easier for them than to drink a plain Budweiser. So is that, is that the next step? Because what I see here, what I fear here is that we have legal products that have been determined legal on both the federal and state level. Now, there is pending legislation that could ban these on the state and federal level, and that would pretty much eliminate all the things that we're talking about doing here. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, if that's the, if that's the way we want to do, but for a city, and our charge in a city or a county to take a product that is available to adults legally right now for them to access it, and if they choose, we heard from constituents last time about adults liking, the only way that they were able to use a vaping product was it was cotton candy or something like that, that, yeah, kids like it, but adults like it too, because it's easier for them than just a plain tobacco-flavored vaping product. If we take that right away from all of, all of these folks by banning that in the city, is it really going to do anything for the people that are living here in San Rafael? And I just don't, anecdotally, the information that's out there, the way people are getting access to it through the internet, through friends, going across just the bridge over into Richmond or into Solano County where there isn't a ban, is that going to prevent these kids from doing it? And I just don't see that what's been presented here, that's going to say, by us putting a ban, it might make people feel good, but it's not going to change the behavior, the habit of these kids, of the kids are getting access to it right now. So what we're doing is we're putting forth a ban to, to prevent kids or to stop kids or youths from getting addicted to these products, and really what we're doing is we're saying to all of you adults who are adults and can make decisions for yourself on what you want to do with your body, you can't have access to it as well in the city of San Rafael. And I just, I just don't see that, this is my take, but I just don't see that as we're going to, it's worth anything more than the paper that we're going to draft this ordinance on, that there's not going to be the results, that there are not going to be any, the intended results that we're getting off of. And again, I'm not-
Please, if you could, don't interrupt.
As I've said before, I am a strong opponent against all tobacco products. I do not, I don't want you to take this as any way, shape, or form. I was the leader on this council of getting vaping prohibited from our downtown in public, because I don't think it is something that is, that is something good for other people to have to participate in when they choose not to. So I don't want, I don't want you to interpret my responses here as a support for tobacco or vaping products. My issue is here is I don't believe that this is the position that the city should take on a product. It comes down to personal liberties and personal freedoms for me, and an ability for an adult to access what they want. If the federal government bans it and the state government bans it, you're not going to find me, you know, holding up signs protesting this ban on it, I'll tell you that right now. But until that happens, I don't think it's the city's responsibility to do this. So my question to you on that, on the long roundabout way, was that, you know, if we're going to do it, why aren't we doing the whole thing? Your response is, you know, we're taking this as a step at a time, and this is one way that we feel, that the county feels, that they can make an impact on the youth here. One other question for you, you mentioned the, and this is because I sat on the cannabis subcommittee that went through this whole process of getting our cannabis ordinance put into place in the city of San Rafael, taxing, putting forth the ballot measure to tax our providers of the licenses that we provided, both delivery, manufacturing, infused products. And I went online in preparation for this, and I think we're being hypocritical in, as a city, when we're doing this. And I didn't think so in the past, because this wasn't on our agenda at this time, and it wasn't, wasn't up in front of us. But I went back and looked, and I said to myself, okay, so where does this, where does this, where does this go? And what are we doing here? And we're always talking about the big, major tobacco industries of marketing to children. So I went to leafy.com or leafly.com and found these seven fresh strains that taste like strawberries. Strawberry cough, strawberry banana, strawberry cush, pink champagne, strawberry, strawberry cheesecake, one called Dairy Queen. How is that not being marketed in the same way to the youth, going and finding the other thing? The way that you can pick your vaping product, the way you vaporize it, with the type of cannabis that you get. The DaVinci scent plus Blue Dream, or how about the Candy Pens Gravity with Sour Diesel, or the cannabis product called GSC, otherwise known as Girl Scout Cookies? And use that with your Firefly too. So as a city, we're telling, we're telling one part of the population that this big tobacco retail, big tobacco is marketing products towards our youth and using flavors to entice them to do this, and on the other side, we're authorizing six or 10 or 12 delivery services within the city limits of San Rafael to deliver recreational adult-use cannabis with names like Girl Scout Cookies. Who's that marketed to? And I'd like your opinion, you know, as the county health officer, did we make a mistake there? Are we being hypocritical in what we're doing here? And does it, does it jibe with what we did by allowing these other things in the city limits?
I think, I can respond, I think what we're seeing there is that the effectiveness of, you know, from the marketing standpoint, of having those sorts of flavorings to increase sales. And that, you know, it's very clear from memos that have been circulated, whether it's tobacco or the vaping industry, that because these products are addictive, targeting young people is a really effective strategy, because you get someone in for, you know, every day for a lifetime, that's a heck of a lot more profit than someone who's later in life. And I think the cannabis, any industry knows that, whether it's candy or any, you know, anyone knows that. So I would say, you know, we could step back and say, where are we seeing evidence of that reality? That flavorings targeted towards young people entice young people to use things, whatever it might be, where we can intervene intelligently as policymakers. Right now, we're talking about the fact of the unique contribution of flavorings for tobacco products for enticing young people to use them, and that in itself is a huge harm, right? Because we're seeing a doubling in the rate of people vaping. We have one in three of our Marin County children now vaping on a regular basis and become addicted to nicotine. That, to me, is sufficient, you know, for tonight. And if we ever have another conversation about that same concept as regards to cannabis, I would welcome that conversation, because I would, I think the logic would also apply.
Thank you, John. Kate?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Willis, for being here. Although I think my questions might be for Ethan. So the Grand Jury Report came out last week, and the county ban was approved, but if I understand correctly, it doesn't go into effect for a while, right? Is that-
Yeah, to my understanding, there's a six-month and a 12-month rollout. So the six-month, and correct me if I'm wrong, the six-month rollout is for non-tobacco retailers, so six months from the effective date. The effective date is six months from enactment, so I think that's July 1st. And then the one year is for tobacco retailers that meet that classification with the gross receipts, gross receipts, and that would be January 1st, 2020.
And the recommendation from staff, though, is six months, not a year?
Six months.
Even though the county did a year for a similar thing?
Yep.
Okay. You had a slide on the state legislation and the federal one, could you go back to that? And I know Dr. Willis had talked about how this is coming along really fast, and I actually think, from a government perspective, this is a fast reaction, that the fact that there's already bills in there, and you did mention the California ones, I know SB 39 is also coming, and that one's not listed up there. Could you just speak to that federal one really briefly, because-
Yeah, so I skipped over those, mostly because it wasn't an update since the last meeting. So that's SB 655 and its companion bill, HR 1498. They've both been introduced, but there's been no action taken. That happened last year during the last legislative cycle as well. They were both introduced, but no action was taken. And there just haven't been any updates since they were first introduced.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is probably happened at the state level faster. And then my final question is, and again, it's related, it's not really actually about flavored tobacco, but in your staff report, and I just keep, I'm fixated on this, is talking about youth and how they purchase e-cigarettes or vaping, and that number doesn't add up to 100%. So of course, I'm just curious where the other 40% is, because to me, I would think that the online would be much bigger, because all products for that age group are purchased online. So could you speak to that missing 40%?
Definitely. We've been digging to try to find where that 40% is, and unfortunately, those reports are still currently being completed. So these are findings that have been discussed through the FDA, since they have access to those reports as well. And this is just my best guess. They're referring to the percentage of individuals who use, not the one, the complete percentage of individuals.
Okay, thank you.
I would agree with that hypothesis.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, sorry.
Dr. Willis, I think I'm addressing myself to you, but this might also go to Ethan Guy. So somewhat related to Councilmember Collins' question about the source of flavored tobacco products for children, for youth vapors. The data we've seen in the staff report and that I've seen elsewhere suggests that perhaps 5% to 15% of youth are getting their, those who do vape, are getting their flavored tobacco products from retail outlets, and then the balance from other sources, whether it's, in your case, a, or the example you mentioned, a willing adult, or the internet, or a friend, a peer. But what we're talking about regulating here is that, if the data is correct, 5% to 15% channel. And what we also know here in San Rafael is if we can believe that the enforcement efforts that have been conducted by the FDA in our community over the last two to three years accurately represent the sales to minors in our community, effectively, we are not selling to minors. In other words, of the enforcement that has taken place, there have been, found no violations among the licensed tobacco outlets in the city of San Rafael, that is over the last couple of years. So if that's the case, what we're talking about is the example that you raise, which is the sale doesn't necessarily take place directly to the minor, it takes place to an adult, and adults are giving to minors. My question is, are we seeking to enforce against the wrong cohort? Should we instead be directing our efforts, our enforcement efforts, against adults who are complicit in this problem we have, which is youth taking up tobacco? And if so, what can we and should we be doing about it, as opposed to punishing retailers who aren't at fault? They're following the law, they're enforcing the law, and they're good actors in our community.
Well, first of all, I agree with you completely with regards to retailers. I mean, I, this prob-, this is not a problem of retailers, this is a problem of demand, right? I mean, I would never assume that the retailers are not acting in good faith, right? The problem is, is that we have a product that is intrinsically harmful for both the social and the health consequences we've described, and we have lot, we have failed to regulate this product. So now we are unfortunately dealing with a retail environment that needs modification. I just wanted to offer a factual correction in terms of the, so there have been 10 events in which, you know, we work with the sheriff to do operations where we'll have a young person seek to purchase tobacco products, and looked at the data from the last three years. In San Rafael, there were 10 occurrences in which a young people, a young person was able to actually purchase, illegally purchase a tobacco product in San Rafael in the last three years. So that, and is that, are we, okay, that's-
I was citing the FDA figures, they do their own enforcement.
Okay, so yeah, so we know that, we know that young people can come, you know, that would rely on sort of the vigilance around the retailer. I think a greater concern, and I think part of the, the fault of the assumption of this is that that's all we need to do, right? What we're, if you, can I ask you to go back to the slide of the University of Texas Right, so, actually, sorry, it's the next slide. Yeah, so these are the sources of how adolescents were getting used to their, you know, 31% purchased from a store or online, it'd be helpful to see how that breaks down. But that other, you know, 30% is buying from another person or giving someone money to purchase for them. So there's clearly access happening from people who are not actually, would never be in the store, for the enforceability of a minor actually seeking is really only a small fraction of that total contribution. So I think the answer, my answer to your question is that there's a simple solution, whether it's enforcement of adults who might be offering it to young people, or young people coming in to get it themselves, is to not offer it at all. And that's the remedy that has been being promoted throughout the county and the region. And SB 38 would offer that solution as well.
Mayor.
Dr. Willis, thank you so much for being here. I want to turn it around a little bit and focus on the group of adults who we're proposing to deprive of access to flavored tobacco products. Could you tell me, based on your professional opinion, what harm, if any, would come to that group from this deprivation that we're considering tonight?
My belief is that no harm would come to that community. I know, and I recognize that, I should modify that to say, there are some people who would need to find a non-flavored version of whatever benefit they're experiencing from vaping. And I think the, you know, to me, the real concern is around smoking cessation, right? When I think from the public health standpoint, when someone is choosing to vape rather than smoke a cigarette, that's beneficial to their health, right? It's safer than cigarette smoking. It doesn't mean it's safe, but it is safer. And so that's a, that's a population, that's an issue that we want to take seriously. And I think my answer to that is, A, you know, in large studies, there hasn't been actually a reliable demonstration of vaping as a sustainable form of tobacco cessation, right? What we actually see is that some people end up using, it's sort of like weight loss, you have a, you have a period where you might benefit, and then it comes back. So some people might have short-term benefit, but a lot of end up, you know, using, having dual use, so they're sort of using both, because the nicotine addiction is still present. But importantly, if someone is inhaling vapor for pleasure and for, and if they're addicted to nicotine and had been using cigarettes, that is still available to them with this ordinance, right? That experience, that product, that benefit is still available to them in a non-flavored version.
Thank you.
And there's also, I would say, we also want to just make a commitment as a health department to a whole range of tobacco cessation offerings, because this is, I think, one of the most important things we could be doing for people. And there's, you know, there's, anyone who's interested in finding whatever method might work best for them, can contact our Tobacco Control Program.
I'm anxious to hear from the public, but I do have a question or two, and appreciate your patience once again. Real basic question, first of all, and that is nicotine addiction imposed both by cigarettes and I'm alarmed by the additional factor that vaping creates with regard to addiction, far more than I realized before I started looking into this. And it seems like it's more profound with vaping than it might be with cigarettes for a couple of reasons, the intensity and the frequency, et cetera, et cetera. So if you could just outline for me, not having a medical degree, what the long-term health consequences are of nicotine addiction?
Well, there's the nicotine itself, and then there's the way in which nicotine contributes to other harmful consumption, right? So when someone is addicted to nicotine, as I've mentioned, there are various ways to gain, you know, to access nicotine in their regular life and habits. Most of those forms are frankly, you know, quite harmful in terms of combustible leaf, right? So tobacco. So we know that it's a gateway to tobacco use among young people, so I would count that as one of the most important harms of nicotine addiction, especially for young people. Nicotine itself is a neurotoxin, right? It interferes with brain development, it causes dopamine release in ways that for the developing brain actually can cause long-term harm. For people who use nicotine on a regular basis as adults, it's a stimulant, right? So nicotine rate increases metabolism, it's one of the reasons why people, when they try and stop smoking, it's so difficult, because it's, you're down, and you're not, and you're sort of relying on that up, that your body has become accustomed to and physiologically dependent upon. That increased metabolic activity has a variety of different harmful effects, including higher rates of heart attack and stroke. People who are using vaping devices have about a 25% increase in heart attack and stroke compared to people who don't vape. And there's new evidence that nicotine increases the metabolic activity of tumor growth. So when people are smoking cigarettes, it's sort of a double hit. You have the carcinogenic effect of the tar from the cigarette, and then an acceleration of the tumor activity because of the nicotine on top of it. So those are some of the frank health harms of nicotine itself.
I have a copy, as I guess we all do, a copy of the grand jury report on vaping that just, just came out. And I, frankly, I think they did an excellent job in their reporting, certainly helped me in my understanding, but I was, I was curious, from your standpoint, there are a number of conclusions and recommendations within it, and we have to respond to two of them. But broadly speaking, are you in concurrence with the grand jury's report?
I am. I mean, despite the fact that they, you know, called, called us out for, you know, not doing enough.
Right.
We, and I, I agree, I think we could do more, and we need to do more. We have been working very closely with Marin County Office of Education in terms of, trying to educate our young people and our, and our parents. The problem with that strategy of just education in the absence of policy change is it hasn't been effective enough, we've seen more than doubling again in the last couple of years. The report was extensively researched, lots of really helpful citations. I don't know that we can share, I think it's a, it's a hidden process in terms of who talks to whom, but I, as a whole, I agree with the recommendations, and I'm grateful for this added call to action for us as a county.
And, and thank you for that. And a couple of, of their points, this has struck me, and there are many, but just a couple, based on some things that we heard at the last meeting, and this was perhaps enlightening, at least for, for me. One was, when questioned, adolescents' e-cigarette users stated that they used vaping because they thought it was less harmful than smoking tobacco. I, I believe you agreed with that. Although some said that the vaping to stop or cut down on smoking cigarettes, no major scientific study has found that e-cigarettes have effectively reduced tobacco dependence as a treatment product. Does that seem to make sense to you?
That's right. I mean, and I tried to, that, that's true. The FDA has not approved vaping devices as a tobacco cessation product. And one of the contingencies in the, in the ordinance is that if, you know, tobacco cessation products are, would be allowed to be, continued to be sold, and if, you know, if flavored vaping devices did, under the FDA, become approved as tobacco cessation products, it would be regulated through, you know, through a physician, there would be an exemption for those, but they're, they are not currently approved as tobacco cessation devices.
Well, you know, it went on to say, the AP reported, in fact, e-cigarette use among teens is associated with a higher likelihood of use of regular tobacco and lower rates of smoking cessation. Do you agree with that as well?
I do. Absolutely. It's a gateway for young people, it goes the opposite direction. People who start vaping can start smoking.
And in fact, they make reference, which I highlighted as well, as a gateway to cigarettes. So my conclusion is, this is moving those that might initiate with vaping to, to cigarettes, as opposed to the other way around. Not in all cases, but it sounds like more than going the other way, if you will. I also looked at and received a number of emails, and suspect we all did, but in reviewing some, some other matters, I received one from Jeremiah Mock, who you may be familiar with, professor of, at UCSF. And they are talk, he is talking rather about an interest in issue to me that's going to be before us, and it says, e-cigarettes, however allowing exemptions, and that's the reason I bring it up now, for adults only, so adult-only stores, that can be accessed by eighteen-year-olds, would be in caps, a major step backwards, and be seen as a victory for the tobacco industry, in caps as well. Goes on and talks about exceptions, et cetera. Are, are you in agreement that, in fact, this would be a step back if we, if we put in place the exemption?
I do believe this would be a step back, and I, and the reason is partly that what we're looking at here in terms of the federal and state, we have an opportunity here to, through example, demonstrate what it looks like to protect our community. The state is moving in that direction, but I've learned not to wait for the feds and the state. You know, Sacramento and DC are not as nimble as we are, and this is an epidemic that's requiring a strong action and, and rapid action, because the rates are increasing at alarming, alarming rates.
Certainly areas of concern, but I think we'll now turn to the public and if, if I could impose upon you to stay for a little bit, because there may be some other questions that might, might rely upon your background experience and expertise. Certainly appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this side?
Hi.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
If you could introduce yourself, you'll have about two minutes, the lights on the podium will indicate where you're at, green, white, and then all of a sudden blinking red, and you're done.
Okay. My name's Jennifer Parker, I am a resident of Marin County. My question actually is for you. You are saying that you want to get rid of flavored vape juice, but what's your take on Monster Energy Drinks, Red Bull, and everything else that these kids can access? Those are stimulants? Five-hour energy drinks? What's the difference between that and someplace where they can purchase those things, they can walk right in? My thirteen-year-old can go into a liquor store and go grab one of those or a 7-Eleven, but she cannot walk into a vape shop, because there is a restriction. And granted, she is taller than me, she looks like she's probably sixteen, but I know well that they would cart her in a heartbeat. So you, please explain to me, what is the difference between vape juice versus Red Bull, Monster Energy Drinks, I don't know, fluoride in our water, Ritalin, everything else that they're putting kids on, but you're more worried about a flavored juice? My kid, I asked her before I came here, how many kids do you know at your school vape? She said, zero. I said, how many kids at your school know what pot is? Some of them are on CBD oils, their parents put them on medication, but not one of them vapes, does vape juice, doesn't know anything about flavored vape anything. Why? Because their parents don't allow it. The businesses here don't allow it, period. So, but their parents will let them have a Monster Energy Drink? So that's what I want to know. What's the difference?
Here's, here's what we will do with regard to public comment, we'll certainly welcome that comment. At the conclusion of the comments, if there are questions posed, either our staff will address those questions, or perhaps Dr. Willis, if he's so willing, but we'll collect those questions and address them after others have had an opportunity to speak this evening. So stand, stand by, you'll get your answers shortly.
Okay. Can I ask one more thing? Or say one more thing?
Uh, yes.
It hasn't beeped yet. So I'm a former smoker, I smoked on and off for twenty years, and I use a e-cigarette to help me with that. I don't smoke as much, I don't stink, I don't cause offense to my family, I'm not craving a cigarette every five minutes like I was before, and I particularly like a blackberry flavored salt. And, you know, it, it hasn't hurt anything. I smoke less, and I don't have an addiction problem to whatever. I've tried your nicotine gums and your nicotine patches that are highly toxic, and they're readily available at pharmacies, but you're worried about a juice that's addictive to kids, but you're willing to go ahead and let the FDA regulate nicotine gums, nicotine patches? And that's okay, where you have glycerin, salt, and a flavor, and nicotine in a vape, that's it.
Thank you, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, please. Yes, sir. Uh, let me, let me just check in, because I don't want to interrupt you if we're on time. Is it, it's working properly? Okay. Thank you. Excuse me.
Nice to meet you guys again.
Yeah, likewise.
Um, you know, what occurred to me when I was out there is that it's kind of odd that we are both on the same side. We are all anti-tobacco. That is the truth. We are all anti-tobacco. This side's anti-tobacco, this side is anti-tobacco. So why can't we come to some type of terms here, where we realize that we don't want to be pushed back to tobacco? The logic of this anti-tobacco coalition telling all of the adults here, you can only do tobacco, is striking me as not only hypocritical, but just so illogical that I can't even explain it to myself. And then I started to realize, what is going on here? You know, no one wants to smoke anymore, right? People have found a healthier alternative, and if they are worried about their children, they need to educate them. Quitting is easier now with vape products, right? The pharmaceutical companies, which the doctor here has now decided to throw a tagline in on, and say, well, you could look at our websites and buy the gums, Cetrix, Wellbutrin, and the patches, that the pharmaceutical companies are actually funding them for. So his cessation products are actually the pharmaceutical companies and the real reason behind why we're here, right? The law is twenty-one years old. We should be enforcing that, and we do. The city does a great job of enforcing it. It's a hundred percent. They, it's one hundred percent, right? So everyone agrees that the ban is kind of a symbolic. It doesn't do anything from kids vaping. Most kids are vaping marijuana products. When they do these questionnaires about vaping, they don't differentiate between the marijuana products and the e-cigarettes. They're lumping all the marijuana vaping that is going on with the vaping statistics.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council. Whoops, sorry. I didn't mean to, mean to break your, break your stuff.
That's okay, good recovery.
Uh, my name is Stefan Dedeck, I'm with THR Policy. Minors shouldn't vape, and we all agree on that, but prohibition will not accomplish the goal of preventing youth access or youth use. Instead, it leads to products being obtained in ways that the city would not have control over. It bans virtually ninety-nine percent of all vapor products, because inadvertently, tobacco flavors do contain characterizing flavors like caramels and bourbons in order to create the tobacco flavor. So it's, it's not like you're banning flavors, you're banning pretty much ninety-nine percent of the category. We hear about people over the age of twenty-one who might be buying these products for their underage friends, but in what world do we hold legitimate, law-abiding retailers responsible when other adults intentionally violate the law? This policy would take away legal products from law-abiding citizens who use them to quit and stay off of smoking, adults who often tried every single other option to quit smoking and finally found something that works for them. Yet this policy does nothing about enforcement regarding those who willingly violate the law. We often hear that the industry markets to minors, yet it's public health groups and the state itself that spends hundreds of millions of dollars on TV and other advertising, showing minors using these products and basically saying, your friends are doing this to be cool. How is that for a marketing message? The often paid supporters for these prohibition policies claim that there's an epidemic of youth vaping, yet we can debate what an epidemic actually means. We should ask why cannabis and nicotine are combined into the same statistic and inflate a number, yet nicotine is addressed in hundreds of manufactured media pieces. The FDA, a while ago, changed the regulation on nicotine patches, gums, and lozenges, to allow for indefinite use because there's no public health concern on the use of nicotine. Please allow for adults to retain access to flavored vapor products, they don't deserve to be casualty of the war on smoking. Thank you very much. Your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Cameron Price, I'm a San Rafael resident. I went to Glenwood Elementary School, Davidson Middle School, San Rafael High School. I am so blessed to live in a beautiful area. I, my family is healthy, grandparents, parents, myself, my brother, I'm so grateful that none of them have any smoking tobacco-related illnesses. I want other people to have that opportunity, and that starts with the current generation not having any gateway into any sort of habit that will lead to harm. I think the goal of big tobacco is to create as many customers as possible as quickly as possible. You want, they want those customers to have the most longevity. They don't want to hook you when you're fifty, they want to hook you when you're thirteen. And when you're thirteen, you're more susceptible to making a decision in the moment without understanding long-term health effects. That is something that comes with experience when you're an adult. When you're a child, you don't know what it's like to think thirty years in advance of what the quality of your life is going to be. That's something that is not included in any sort of advertising about why vaping is available, good, easy, healthier for you. It, it does not include any cessation education. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to express these strong feelings that I have. I think the most appropriate way to close is the mission of San Rafael City Government, which is to enhance the quality of life and provide for a safe, healthy, prosperous, and livable environment in partnership with the community. It makes a lot of sense to me that a flavored tobacco ban with no exemptions is the right decision for the community, a healthy community. Thank you so much for your time.
Well presented, thank you.
Thank you for that, very inspired.
Good, good evening.
That was, that was really nice. I'm Dr. Jason Now, I'm a physician at Works in Marin, I'm a resident of San Rafael, and I'm the father of two teenage boys. I'm also the Marin Committee Chair of the San Francisco Marin Medical Society, and I'm here to communicate that the medical society doesn't, supports only a com- complete ban of the sale of flavored tobacco products. The ordinance, as written with adult venue exemptions, is not acceptable. We are in the middle of a vaping epidemic, we need to consider the loss of tax revenue on the sale of tobacco products as a public health victory. The long-term societal costs are much greater to our children. San Rafael should follow the lead of other municipalities like Corder Madera, Larkspur, San Anselmo, Sausalito, and unincorporated Marin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Taylor, and I came here with a plan to have brief things with this template, and I've found this to be very insightful and educational, and I want to thank everybody on the council and from, and the doctors and the people here for sharing. So I am going to try my best to be brief, and I am known for my blunt honesty, so please forgive me, but I do have a lot of questions that I know isn't here, but I was hoping to get a printout of what you guys have been using, and I think maybe to speak on other people, they might like to have some as well. So I have effectively stayed a non-smoker for almost six years through the use of what was explained to me at the time, and has also been used by a doctor at UC Berkeley Extension when I've been studying there to become a drug and alcohol counselor, that it can be a farm of, form of harm reduction for smoking. And now, that was a few years back when I first heard that term and started, but it has helped me not pick up a cigarette, not buy cigarettes, and has dramatically improved my health. I no longer have symptoms of chronic bronchitis and asthma, and I haven't had to go to the ER for visits and PRNs and daily medications, and I'm already running out of time, but I really appreciated everything that was said, and I could write a thesis paper probably on this whole subject after tonight, so thank you.
And, thank, thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Carpenter. I went to Redwood High School, and I'm currently a nursing student at Arizona State University. I was the president of Redwood Night Live Club at, in high school, and I'm an intern for the Marin County Health and Human Service Department, along with the Smoke Free Marin Coalition. Tobacco companies target lower-income neighborhoods by selling cheaper flavored nicotine devices. This is an unfair disadvantage that also has a drastic effect on the youth. Although the legal age for tobacco product use is twenty-one, high schoolers are still getting addicted. Including an exemption for businesses only selling to customers that are twenty-one, twenty-one years and older, completely undermines the purpose of the flavor ban. Underage users will still find a way to access these addictive products. The FDA doesn't approve e-cigarettes as a cessation device. Smoking and tobacco use is still the number one preventable death in the country, and about four hundred eighty thousand people annually die from tobacco-related illnesses. Locally, Marin residents each individually use five hundred fifty-one dollars in tax money yearly from a loss of productivity and other health-related costs for tobacco users. Including exemptions in San Rafael ordinances will lead to many new tobacco shops relocating to this town, which is already full of tobacco retailers. Please consider these facts as you decide on the appropriate regulations for the proposed flavor ban, and remember that this decision will directly impact the futures of the next generation. Thank you.
And thanks for, thanks for joining us this evening.
Hi. First, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak and hearing from all of us. It's great to see so many people out here who care about this issue. My name Um, my name is Santa Ritter, I live in San Rafael, and I'm a junior at San Rafael High School. I'm studying tobacco and vaping policy, and I'm a member of the Smoke Free Marin Youth Coalition and the Coalition Connection. I'm here tonight to represent the youth population in Marin County. Every day I see what the vaping epidemic is doing to my generation. Teenagers have become dependent on vape products and sneak off to the bathroom or sit in their cars during lunch to juul. The flavors that mask the harsh taste of tobacco make it easy for teens to become addicted to nicotine, in addition to making vaping even more appealing. The exciting new flavors pull kids in, and the tobacco companies know this. According to the California Department of Public Health, three out of four users of e-cigarettes started with a flavored product. It's also important to note that flavored e-cigarettes aren't the only problem. Many teens turn to all of, to other flavored tobacco products such as small cigars like Swisher Sweets and Cigareals. Um, overall flavored tobacco products are harmful in any capacity, and tobacco is still the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. I urge you to pass this flavor ban without exemptions. Teens get their flavored vape products using fake IDs or from older friends and siblings who can legally purchase these products. If, um, 21 and older businesses are exempt, teens will still be able to acquire these harmful tobacco products. Additionally, this exemption would encourage retailers from other cities in Marin to move into San Rafael, creating an overall increase in access to flavored tobacco products. My generation is supposed to be the generation that ends smoking. Do not let us become another generation victim to the tobacco industry and addicted to nicotine, this time through e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products. Thank you for removing any exemptions and working to make a change in San Rafael. I'm very hopeful about the positive change that this policy will bring, and thank you for your work.
And thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean Smith. I'm a middle school teacher and a San Rafael resident. It was a lovely walk, two blocks, to get over here this evening, and I appreciate you and your time this evening. I wanted to share my experiences with students vaping at my school site. Uh, students use vape, uh, students using vape devices is absolutely a growing concern. Uh, nearly daily, students are vaping while at the school site. Um, I'm really lucky to work in a wonderful district that's taking steps to try to meet this rising concern through education. I'm really lucky. Um, but we need to talk about the larger problem in the room, and that's access. I have a close relationship with my students. I pride myself on that fact. When I speak with students, they report many things to me. Chief amongst that, students report that parents and older siblings are purchasing vaping devices for them, make no mistake about it. Students give up their vaping supplies one day to administration and students, they have a vaping device the next day. They have their juice and all of their products replenished and refilled, it is not a problem. As I understand it, you have a powerful opportunity, um, to keep these products out of the hands of children by approving the flavored tobacco ordinance with no exemptions. I love my students, I take my role as an advocate extremely seriously, I care deeply about their long-term health. We have the responsibility now to keep these vaping materials out of students' hands, and if we have that opportunity by banning this flavored tobacco, we need to take it. Um, we should absolutely do that by adopting effective policy just like our surrounding communities have done. Please help us, and thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for your comments, we appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Bailey. Um, I just want to say, uh, that I do understand the problem with adolescents and young, younger people using vape products. I definitely understand that. Um, I would just like to encourage parents, um, possibly even teachers, principals, whatever it takes, um, where you're seeing these issues. But me being an adult myself, um, and having been, been clean from tobacco use for two years, um, is very, very, very much so, it definitely is a accomplishment for me. I kind of look at it, at it the same way as like, uh, John Gamblin was saying earlier, um, there's a lot of flavored alcohol out there as well. There's a lot of, there's just like a lot of flavors. I don't think that the, I don't think that everything should just be derogatorily towards flavors. Um, I, I love vaping. Um, it's definitely an alternative to quitting tobacco products, which is, to me, really like, not, not the best thing. It smells bad, it's bad, it causes death. Um, vaping, vaping is, is just an alternative to ease away from that. Um, my mom has smoked for 27 years. She just now started to quit using tobacco products because of vaping, and I feel really proud to say that. I don't think that this ban is necessary, I just think that people should take different measures to make sure that adolescents don't use it. So, thank you.
Evening.
Hi, my name is Allison. Um, I'd like to start by clarifying some things and sharing some of the misrepresented information that, um, around the youth vaping studies. Um, first of all, with all due respect to Dr. Willis, um, he said that, um, one Juul pod was equivalent to two packs of tobacco, whereas the Juul pods actually advertise that one pod is equal to one pack. Just a thing. The National Youth Tobacco Study quoted by the FDA shows that vapor product usage by high schoolers at 27%. However, there are issues with that number, mainly that that 27% represents over 3 million students using vapor products, and of those 600, of those 600,000 were 18 years or older, which in most states is illegal smoking age. Um, the concern is that vapor products will lead to a lifetime of nicotine addiction, but over 1 million of those students had only used a vapor product less than five times in the last 30 days. Another 600,000-plus students had used a vapor product less than 20 times in the last 30 days. And in, in no way, by any means, does that mean they're addicted, that's a very low amount. These studies are worded in a way that really create unnecessary fear in parents. The chances of anyone using cigarettes after starting to vape is extremely low. Um, no one knowingly wants to go from a lifesaving alternative to something that we all know is, uh, as Dr. Willis mentioned, is one of the leading causes of preventable death. Um, my own personal experience as a smoker, I started at 15, I had friends buy it for me at a 7-Eleven, um, sometimes I bought from specific 7-Elevens that I knew would sell to me. Um, my lung collapsed two times while I was a smoker, which led to a, a surgery to close up some holes. Um, my lung surgeon told me to start vaping instead, and since I have, every checkup I've had has come back clean, I've been healthy, um, I just feel better. So, that's my contribution, thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Hi, my name is Eddie Walsh. Uh, say thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak again, I talked to you guys last month, I think. So one of my things is prohibition has never worked. So if you look back at history, you know, we don't want to repeat history. That's why we take history classes in high school and college. Um, so, uh, we had spoken about the secondhand vapor. Well, actually, there's a study that just came out today that, from Dr. Michael Siegel, that they've done, let's see, uh, "Non-ventilated vape shop where employees and 13 customers were actively vaping while the sampling was taking place. Hence, what would be considered a situation presenting a high level of exposure to secondhand vapor. However, given all these unfavorable conditions, the results still reported no dangerous levels of exposure to any hazardous chemicals." So I can give you that to you guys. And also, the Royal College of Physicians, uh, in the UK, they actually promote vaping. Um, and their doctors promote it, they give, that's, you know, they want to get people off of death sticks, that's, we don't want to smoke cigarettes, we want to vape. I quit eight years ago with vaping, my doctor says I'm healthier than I have been, I've had the same doctor for the past 20 years. So, if that doesn't say anything, I can bring you guys the doctor's reports to look at them as well. Um, so here, I'm gonna leave this with you, I want you guys all to read this, because this is, it's good stuff, it's gonna, it's not just from, um, here in the States and the FDA where we have to buy our own insurance. It's a lot different, uh, when it comes to smoking. They, if you smoke, you, you're gonna get a disease and you're gonna die, and you're gonna pay into the billions of dollars for all these medications you need from Big Pharma. If people aren't getting sick and dying, they're losing billions of dollars. You gotta look at the big picture. It sounds crazy, but you gotta open your eyes.
Good evening, council, my name is Tamara Wise. I quit, I was a cigarette smoker for 17 years, it was extremely difficult for me to quit. When I heard about the studies that proving vaping is a healthier alternative, I decided to give that a try, and I finally quit smoking. I can breathe better, my blood pressure is more stable, I can be more physically active. It changed my life, and I would hate to see anyone else not have that opportunity due to it being harder to access than cigarettes are. Aside from that, I am also a manager at VIP Vape Shop. I, I have met thousands of members in this community that will be negatively impacted by this ban. Many of my customers become visibly distraught at the thought of being pushed back to cigarettes and even a flavor that resembles a cigarette. There are dirt, there are, are adults that enjoy flavors and the separation from cigarettes, there are adults who should theoretically have the right to choose if they want to use a mango or a maple flavor. The FDA has no warnings on long-term nicotine use, that's obvious, because they've taken the warning off of their nicotine replacement therapy, therapy ads. I've heard this brought up pre, in previous meetings on the topic, and just wanted to make sure that was being looked at while making this decision, along with other facts about vaping having much better ingredients than cigarettes too. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Georgia. I'm here tonight because, I'm here tonight because I have seen how much better vaping is for my mom. She is healthier and happier, and that makes me happier too. I don't have to worry about her lungs anymore. Every kid should be able to see their parents switch to something better. Please, please do not pass a full ban, thank you.
Try following that, huh?
Right? I'm not that adorable. Hi, my name is Elena, and I am a supporter of adults' right to choose a healthier alternative to smoking. I'd like to start by saying that this policy is punishing an adult's right to freedom to choose because of the choices of lawbreakers. That should be a shocking statement because it is wrong to take away an effective and a healthier solution due to people illegally buying. Vape products and flavors are legal for adults, please do not take that away. Imagine how you would feel if you were a smoker. You'd, you'd finally found an alternative solution, uh, that is 90, 93% healthier and doesn't smell or taste like a cigarette. Then an organization that genuinely does not care about your health wants to take that away, your lifesaving alternative. You would be feel, you would feel that that is unfair, wrong, you'd feel like your rights were being infringed upon. When so many studies and reports have come out about vaping and being a great alternative for adults, I don't see why you think it would be doing a good thing by taking it away from adults, adult-only establishments. It would be taking a massive step down in public health, and it would show little consideration for adults' health in our community. Many responsible vape shops like this one in San Rafael have already taken action to ensure that they don't carry any products that appeal to kids. They don't even let kids in their stores, and will not sell to someone that appears as if they're buying for a minor. So leaving an adult-only exemption would allow our rights to choose and still help keep it out of the hands of minors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, my name is Monique, and, um, I'm here tonight as someone who supports adults' rights to a healthier alternative such as vaping. Um, I am extremely disappointed that public health tobacco control organizations and supporters continuously use my community as a political pawn in their motivation to prohibit access to a safer alternative to smoking. To them, this is about identity, identity politics, uh, politics and not people's health. Seeing my community frequently mentioned and used to further the narrative about the perceived social injustice is nothing short of disgusting. Groups like African American Tobacco Control Leadership Council go from city to city seeking prohibition on vapor products while ensuring that regular deadly cigarettes remain available. Then these groups claim it's big tobacco targeting my community while they continue to gain the financial benefits that keep their organization going. These so-called leaders in tobacco control do not care about my health or the health of my community. They only care about the continued sales, cigarette sales to justify their existence. Saying that my community uses menthol flavors more as a reason to ban these products while implying that Caucasians prefer tobacco flavors, which isn't true, is building a racist narrative on top of a bad policy. This ban is supposed to be about kids and not my race or any community to begin with. So the fact that they are bringing up these politics shows that there are different motives behind these policies. Please do not ban the very thing that is helping every community, including myself, switch away from smoking. There are countless studies proving that vaping is safer, safer alternative for adults in every single community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adoni Soufaz, I'm a resident of San Rafael, and, uh, I'm a student in College of Marin. Um, I want to thank you all for your time today, first of all. Um, if we get rid of flavored tobacco, what is, what is there to stop young people from switching to conventional cigarettes or chewing tobacco? If young people are currently vaping and their body has a physical dependence on nicotine, where will they go to get their fix? The short answer is they'll go to what's available. In other words, non-flavored tobacco, such as cigarettes or chew, chewing tobacco. Cigarettes have 70 carcinogens. Studies done on e-cigarettes have proved inconclusive as to their harmfulness. I'm not advocating for youth, youth vaping. I'm sure we all are, we all agree with that. But the argument of vaping as a gateway to cigarette use, I circle back to what I said at the start. With no access to flavored cigarettes, youth will undoubtedly turn to cigarettes for their fix. Do we want children smoking more cigarettes in schools and on our streets, in their homes, where they're supposed to lead happy, healthy, productive lives? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mitchell Jordan, I'm a resident of San Rafael. So after smoking for about four years, I quit six months ago with vaping, and I've never felt better. My lungs, my body, I've had many surgeries due to injuries, um, and even like my bone health is much better due to vaping. Um, but besides that, I think that there's a couple lines being blurred here. I think, um, that there's a line between big tobacco and the vape industry. I think a lot of, a lot of the supporters of this think that, that big tobacco is pushing vaping to get kids addicted, but the vape industry is completely against big tobacco. These are not the same entity. Besides that, there's the, I think that there's some fear mongering going on here. We've all heard of the popcorn lung, um, even the doctor here, uh, mentioned it himself. Popcorn lung is caused by a chemical known as acetal, and it's called popcorn lung because it originated at a popcorn factory where acetal is used as buttery flavoring to go onto microwave popcorn. There's very trace amounts of acetal in, uh, only a small minority of vape juices, and, um, and there's exponentially more acetal in cigarettes than there is in any vape juices, and there's never been a single case of popcorn lung even from cigarette use. So, um, I think that shows a little bias, and, and third, I think that this ban is slightly un-American. Um, we, at the very beginning of this hearing, we got up and said the Pledge of Allegiance at the end. The last line is, "With liberty and justice for all." This is, uh, this ban is taking away our personal liberties and the right to choose, and even if it's not the best thing, adults should be able to make decisions for themselves, and law-abiding adults should not be punished. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, mayor and city council, my name is Shane Valentine, I'm, uh, I live in San Rafael, I, uh, work for the American Heart Association, I'm a community impact director with a focus on, uh, school systems. Um, I'm here this evening to support the flavor, uh, ban, um, for tobacco products within San Rafael without exceptions, uh, exemptions. Uh, the policy will most likely, uh, be, uh, will most, oh, excuse me, the policy will be most successful in reducing access to products that are, uh, the tobacco industry's key strategy in targeting and addicting new smokers, particularly youth, uh, if the, if the policy is complete and does not ha, carve out vape shops. Uh, the recent, uh, released grand jury report calls for a uniform ordinance banning, banning all flavored tobacco and vape products. Uh, from a business perspective, an exemption in San Rafael provides an unlevel playing, uh, business playing field. More importantly, from a public health perspective, the exemption would put San Rafael on the map as the go-to place for youth, um, appealed flavored products. Uh, in pursuit of protect, uh, protecting children's health and passing a sound flavored tobacco ordinance, we urge that you pass the ordinance free of exceptions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks for your comments.
Uh, thank you, council members, Mr. Mayor, Dave Bonfilio, I'm a volunteer advocate with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, uh, and I am a commissioner on First Five Marin. Um, I want to read something from Juul's website for you. Juul products are not intended to be used as cessation products, including Juul products are not intended to be used as cessation products, including for the cure or treatment of nicotine addiction. So they admit that themselves. I was pleased to hear the, the reference to the Marin County Grand Jury Report earlier last week. And on page eleven, it talks about the major players in the field. Juul is, got between seventy and seventy-five percent of the domestic vaping market. Atria, which is a very large tobacco company, purchased a thirty-five percent interest in Juul for twelve point eight billion dollars. Tobacco, big tobacco is very much in the vaping market. And there is sightings of other players, tobacco players. I also want to reference the report that you had from Public Works earlier today on the closure of Second and Third Street and the coordination that Public Works is doing with Fairfax and Ross and San Anselmo. If you pass a vaping ban and allow exemptions, you are going to be undoing what those cities and townships have done. It would, San Rafael will become the go-to place for vaping products. I urge you to pass a ban on flavored tobacco with no exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and City Council members. My name is Liz Williams and with Americans for Nonsmokers Rights. On behalf of our members here in San Rafael, I want to encourage you to adopt an ordinance that prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products, including all flavored products, vaping products, and menthol cigarettes without the adult store exemption. This proposal is about reducing access to flavored products that are enticing young people to start on a lifetime of nicotine addiction and it makes them easier to keep smoking. The flavors are really key to attracting kids to Juul and other vaping and tobacco products. The use of these flavors is very strategic by these companies because it makes it easier to inhale the nicotine and these products target the age group that is most susceptible to nicotine addiction. And communities all over the Bay Area are taking action to hold retailers accountable for not being part of this tobacco epidemic by selling these addictive and deadly products. And these products, as others have mentioned, are not actually approved cessation products. We do, again, strongly encourage this policy adoption without the adult store exemption because as we have heard, the age of sale in California has been twenty-one for several years now, but youths do report that they are still able to access these products at retailers in their neighborhoods who know them well. And I have a letter also from Mr. Fred Meyer. He's a sixty-year resident of San Rafael and he is a leader in tobacco control. He isn't able to be here this evening, but he asked my colleague and I to bring a letter on his behalf, also supporting this ordinance without the retail tobacco shop exemption. And I do just want to echo what the prior gentleman mentioned, that the Juul and the tobacco companies are now one in the same. Not only Altria has purchased a thirty-five stake, percent stake in Juul, but every major tobacco company in the US owns e-cigarette brands. They understand that these are now, they are now in the nicotine addiction business, not just the tobacco product business. And we have to help ensure that our youth have the chance to start their lives without this addiction. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you say you had a letter for us? Could you provide that to the city clerk and shield distributor? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ariel. I have been, I smoked for seven years. I smoked traditional cigarettes and I have now been off of traditional cigarettes for seven years, so same amount of time. I am also a Marin native. I have managed, consulted, opened multiple vape stores and worked for juice companies in the Bay Area. I am speaking for myself, but I'm sure many others can agree with me. There are many benefits to vaping. A lot of them have been talked about today. From my personal experience, I am diabetic, I have rheumatoid arthritis and hypothyroidism. And the only thing that has ever been able to improve my circulation, by the way, all three of those autoimmune diseases affect my circulation, is vaping. Like it was instant. After two weeks, no more circulation issues and these were problems that I've had since I was twelve. Another benefit is obviously that this has employed me as well as many other local people here. I've heard it benefit in so many different ways. I've heard it improved relationships. We, we heard tonight that a daughter and mother, you know, there's, there's a million different reasons why this could benefit people. I think we're all agreeing here that tobacco's not good for you. No one's saying it's good for you. Also, no one wants kids to use tobacco. That's not what we're doing here. It, it, I just like to stress that this is an alternative and I could only speak personally. I feel better. You know, there is not enough evidence, long-term evidence yet, but I'm just going to speak for myself. I feel a lot better. I can breathe, I can smell, I can taste, just a lot better. So I just don't think this is the solution. Can I talk? It's just not the solution.
And if you could wrap it up, please.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Not the solution. I think it's the online issue. This is a brand-new industry. There's been a lot of new online regulations implemented. I think we just need to give that a chance to take effect, really. I think that's the biggest solution here.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, okay, my name is Bianca and I just want to say that the kind of energy that you all are putting into like this vaping ban, like where is that energy for like housing people who are homeless and like people like who, there's actual problems that you could like work out? I don't know, this is very like petty. Honestly, like vaping, it's, I started smoking cigarettes when I was twelve. It was in the home. I was living with some people who, they smoked packs of cigarettes all the time, so I would just deal them. Most of these people, never have I ever in my life, until I moved to Marin, knew of parents giving their kids iPhone tens and credit cards at their leisure. And it's just kind of weird that like you guys are going after people who are adults, but it's like in the home, you should go after those adults that are like, you know what I mean? Like in the home? Yeah, that's just kind of that. And like another thing, people like to use marginalized communities as like scapegoats in their persuasive arguments. And like I just, as a, somebody who is in a marginalized community, people use it to deal with things, like a cis hetero society, like a very like judgmental type thing. It's a, it's like anxiety, you know? Yeah, that's just kind of it. It's in the home, it's not, yeah, on the street. And don't make a black market.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Erin Hankey and I'm a San Rafael resident. I'm speaking on behalf of the San Francisco Marin Medical Society, which represents more than two thousand physicians in Marin and San Francisco. You heard from Dr. Now earlier. We support an ordinance with no exemptions. Flavored tobacco products are designed to entice and hook the next generation on tobacco products. Youth vaping is clearly a public health epidemic with long-term health consequences and financial implications in the cost of healthcare, as cited in the grand jury report. Our policymakers, you, have the ability to stem the epidemic through an ordinance to ban flavored tobacco products with no exemptions and follow the lead, the example of the Marin County Board of Supervisors and the other local municipalities that have passed similar ordinances with no exemptions. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
And thanks for your comments.
Hi, my name is Linda Hen and I'm a resident of Marin County in a contiguous neighborhood. I also work for the Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships. Balancing the rights of adults who choose to ingest nicotine and the overall public health welfare is a challenge you are facing. Vape products are still available to adults. We are talking about reducing access to a flavored tobacco as a responsible action and improving health. The recent ruling that Dr. Willis referred to earlier by Judge Grimm stated, "The FDA acted irresponsibly by not banning flavored products. In a major victory for America's kids and public health, the lawsuit was brought on by pediatricians and other health professionals. By not acting quickly, the flavored tobacco products have contributed to the harm and to the escalating epidemic of use by youth of e-cigarettes, thus reversing the trends that we were enjoying of decreased tobacco use." The inaction of the FDA has allowed manufacturers to saturate the market, addicting our youth and adversely impacting public health. The FDA allowed candy, bubble gum, mint, and other flavored products to remain on the market without review. Youth getting addicted, youth get addicted easy, easier and currently there are no effective cessation programs. Instead of years to address this, manufacturers now have fourteen days to act, according to Judge Grimm. San Rafael should do the right thing and protect youth and other citizens from harmful addictive products and act responsibly. Do not have exemptions in your ordinance. Banning flavored tobacco products makes sense for all. And if anyone cares, the Warriors did win tonight.
Oh. Thanks for the update, I think. So much for the late-night review.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jaime Rojas. I'm with the National Association Tobacco Outlets, representing retailers. There is misinformation and fear coming from the Marin County Health Department. Let me tell you why. The staff report uses a Texas report on flavor ban. Where is the California report on flavor ban itself? The second report analyzes a two thousand nine FDA flavor ban, a ten-year-old report. Three, in the staff report, it uses the findings of the California Kids Survey 2018, but didn't share the whole San Rafael youth health story in its presentation. The alcohol marijuana report on page thirty of that report states, "High school seniors who drink four more times a month is thirty-two percent. High school seniors who smoke and vape marijuana four more times a month is twenty-six percent." It goes down to page forty-two regarding tobacco and reports, "High school seniors who smoke cigarettes four more times a month is five percent. High school seniors who chew tobacco four more times a month at three percent. And high school seniors who e-cig and vape four more times a month is nineteen percent." The true epidemic is drinking and marijuana, almost sixty percent higher than youth smoking e-cigs and vaping. Why isn't Marin County Health banning flavored alcohol and marijuana instead? California voters passed the following propositions: raising minimum age eighteen to twenty-one, unlike Texas; adding an additional two-dollar tobacco tax, making it more expensive; and adding millions more to Marin County health budget, unlike Texas. The city, excuse me, in the staff report of HDL, the city's financial consultant was called and asked, "What is the economic impact sales to flavored tobacco products?" They would tell you exactly that it was minor. I called HDL and Muni Services, their competitor, and they both said that was the wrong question they asked. The right question was, "What is the loss of sales not only to flavored tobacco, but auxiliary sales like gas, milk, snacks, et cetera, since customers usually make one stop to make their purchases?" The answer is, "Sales tax loss is high." Marin County Health used two thousand nine health cost smoking, a ten-year-old report that costs millions, and I'll just be wrapping up. Well, I called Kaiser and Marin General Hospital Finance Departments and they both stated that's impossible to code financial costs due to tobacco and/or related issue. So why is a ten-year-old report included in the staff report? And lastly, the California Department and FDA both individually and separately conduct annual decoy operations in the city. Retailers passed in the past three years a hundred percent. We ask you not to pass this ordinance in any of its capacities. Thank you. And lastly, just for the record, inputting the two thousand eighteen tobacco laws already in effect in the state of California, which is pretty thick as it is. Thank you.
Hello. My name, my name is Rebecca Williams. I'm the buyer for VIP vape shop here in San Rafael. First, can I bring up some citizen statements and studies to you guys?
You and the, provide the city clerk.
So on top in the folder is a study from the Royal College Physicians that was mentioned before. It heavily encourages people to switch to vaping, says that vaping could not cause five percent of the harm that cigarettes do. It's ninety-three percent healthier and has far less extensive range of toxins. Also in the folder is a report about how the FDA took out any warning about long-term use of nicotine on any of their patches. I find that interesting because a lot of people have mentioned today, what are the long-term use of, what is the danger of long-term nicotine use? And if the FDA is taking it off of their products, I think that they'll eventually do that with vaping as well. And then lastly, in the packet is statements from all of our citizens that purchase juice at VIP and how they would be negatively affected if the ban were to pass. They do feel that it, having the flavors creates a separation from cigarettes that they've worked so hard to get away from. And they've listened to all the studies about vaping that has came out, being healthier, a good alternative, better for secondhand smoke, so that we're not imposing that on our other people who don't smoke in the community. On a different topic from all of that, as the buyer of VIP, I have done a lot to make sure we're not carrying any products that are marketed to kids. In the past, if we've ever had products like that, it's because we weren't fully aware of the political climate around advertising to kids. So here is displays of our juice cases. As you can see, there's no cartoons, no unicorn milk, no donuts, none of that stuff. I don't carry that. I am not somebody who supports children vaping either. We work really hard at VIP every day to make sure that we're helping adults while not endangering children. We are an adult-only establishment. We strive to provide the top, the best quality products for our community. I'll wrap it up. We don't provide products that have diacetal. We don't have products that have ammonia, just all good, mainly FDA-approved ingredients. We really, really hope that you guys consider an adult exemption for the ban and allow us to work with you because we always will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura Walsh and I would like to say first and foremost, I am a mom of a teenage daughter. That being said, I am also a vape liquid manufacturer and distributor. We do make around twenty-seven different flavored liquids. I believe in these products. They helped me, they helped my husband, my mother-in-law all quit smoking. And as I said before, last time I was here, tobacco-flavored e-liquids were not enough for me. I tried and tried and tried. I tried patches, gums, lozenges, chantix, well, butrin, all the horrible side effects, all the not working, my daughter begging me, me in tears, trying not to go to the store and get a pack of cigarettes because my daughter is begging me not to. And, and I assume you guys, at least some of your parents, you know that guilt, when you feel guilty about something you've done to your child, how that stays with you forever and it never leaves. And so I want this product to be in the hands of people that can finally take a deep breath and look their child in the eye and say, "I did this for you." And I was finally able to do it with a product that helped. I have a couple things I would like to read to you. So this first one is from the Royal College of Physicians. It's Nicotine Without Smoke Tobacco Harm Reduction, a report by the Tobacco Advisory Group on the Royal College of Physicians. It says, "There are concerns that e-cigarettes will increase tobacco smoking by renormalizing the act of smoking, acting as a gateway to smoking in young people and being used for temporary, not permanent, absence of smoking. However, the available evidence to date indicates that e-cigarettes are being used almost exclusively as safer alternatives to smoking tobacco by confirmed smokers who are trying to reduce harm to themselves or others from smoking or to quit completely." There is a need for regulate, for regulation and to reduce direct and indirect adverse effects, but this regulation should not be allowed to significantly, significantly to inhibit the development and use of harm reduction products by smokers. In the interests of public health, it is important to promote the use of e-cigarettes and other non-tobacco nicotine products.
So could you wrap it up, please?
Yeah. And I had one more I wanted to read. This is from the California Department of Public Health. Customers, or this is by Dr. Michael Siegel from the California Department of Public Health. They did not document any dangerous levels of exposure to any hazardous chemical standing in a cloud of vapor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to leave these for you guys.
Good evening, my name is Lori Bremner. I'm with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm also a mom of three young adult sons. I'm a cancer survivor and my dad died of tobacco-related illness before my kids ever got to meet him. American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network supports the passage of the ordinance if it does not include an exemption for adult venues. If the ordinance does include the exemption, we change our position to oppose. And let me explain why. You've probably heard the quote, "Only a fool learns from their own mistakes. The wise man learns from the mistakes of others." The wise man learns from the mistakes of others." You have the opportunity to learn from the mistake of Oakland, which was an early adopter in restricting the sale of flavored tobacco products, but they included an adult venue exemption. And now they're having to spend valuable council time, valuable city staff time, and city attorney time going back to fix the ordinance and remove the exemption, because here's what's happening in Oakland. And this is where San Rafael can be headed if you pass without, with an exemption. The retailers are changing their business model to work around the adults-only exemption. With creative accounting and possibly less-than-factual affidavits and even construction projects to create an adults-only section within a store, the burden of prove, which is on the city to prove that 50% threshold, I think it might be 60 in Oakland, is really onerous. So what's happening in Oakland was before the ordinance, there were only five adults-only venues in the city. Now, after the ordinance, there are 45 retailers who claim to be adults-only. And we don't want that to happen in San Rafael. We don't want you to be an island of exemption among the rest of the county that's passed ordinances without an exemption. The grand jury report is based on scientific evidence. What you're hearing from opposition tonight are anecdotes. Anecdotes are not science. We hope you'll base your decision on the scientific evidence and pass a comprehensive ordinance with no exemptions for adult-only venues.
And thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jesse, and like she said, history, you know, we learn from history. Prohibition never works, okay? So I'm here because I believe in the science that backs vaping as being one of the most effective adult-smoking alternatives. I was a cigarette smoker for over a decade. I failed at every attempt that I tried. Tried the patches, the gum, every possible thing. I have a heart condition. I told my cardiologist, and he mentioned that vaping was an alternative that would be healthier for me, and, and that smoking cigarettes would be a bigger risk. And so what does that say about vaping? The fact is that vaping is much safer, and science is right. It's 93% healthier, and we need it to be more accessible to adults than cigarettes. Many people, scientists, doctors, physicians, and officials from the FDA have said that the switch from cigarettes to vape is the best thing we could do for public health. Mitch Zeller, Director of the Center for Tobacco and Control Products at the FDA, has been on record saying, "If we could get all of those people who smoke to complete switch their cigarettes to non-combustible cigarettes of vape, it would be good for public health." Isn't the health of the public what we are all here for and care about? If you do, then please do not ban without any adult exemption flavored nicotine products that would help us switch and stay switched. Many people have lied about the ammonia or other ridiculous ingredients being in vape juice, but there is ample proof that that is not true. The four ingredients in a vape juice are food-grade vegetable glycerin, propathal glycerin, nicotine, and food-grade flavoring. There are poisons and antidepressants in cigarettes, among countless other things, but not in vape juice. When you have a store that specializes in vape products, they do their best to make sure that they don't carry any questionable juice. Why would you want to take away local stores that ensure the highest quality of product when you force adults to buy online, and they don't have the same assurance as they would in their local store? And these, especially VIP, they go out of their way to make sure they know who they're buying from, they know the places that they're coming from. Going online, you're switching people to not understand where they're getting anything from. It's like any other thing, online, you're just, you have no idea. So that's what you're going to force people to do, and that's a much riskier thing.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Jeremiah Mock. I wrote to you, and I appreciate you-
Yes, you did.
-paying attention to the comments that I made. I'm a public health researcher at UCSF. I've been working in the field of tobacco control for two decades. I want to share quickly some notes in response to some of the comments that have been made this evening. So it's important to put all of this in context. We in California, until very recently, in tobacco control, were talking about the end game. In other words, we were talking about ending the entire problem of tobacco use, including nicotine use in California. California is down at about 8%, and Marin County's rates are among the lowest smoking rates in the state, which makes them among the lowest smoking rates in the country. So it's important to understand that until the vaping epidemic started, we were very close to actually ending the tobacco epidemic entirely. As you've heard this evening, vaping rates now among 11th graders in Marin County are in the range of 28%. That's an enormous setback, and it's going to take another generation to correct that setback. It's important to understand that tobacco industry is the major player by far. Juul is controlled by over, controls over 70% of the market now, and that's rising. Juul has 35% stake from Philip Morris. Juul has a market cap that is now larger than Ford Motor Company, Delta Airlines, and Target. This is not a small player that we're dealing with. Because of their partnership with Philip Morris, Juul has now penetrated every corner of the market where you saw Marlboro cigarettes being sold. It's not a healthier alternative, and the evidence increasingly shows that it's not healthier. E-cigarettes significantly increase the risk of heart disease, heart attack, stroke, lung disease, and flavors in Juul pods have recently been found to be carcinogenic. I just want to comment, I have a lot of other notes that I'd like to share with you, but I'd like to go back to the point that you mentioned about the influence on the state legislation. The tobacco industry will see this as a tremendous victory in this county, which is known as one of the leaders in the country in tobacco control. If you allow an exemption, the industry will point to San Rafael and say, "Look, San Rafael is, is a community that is recognizing that it is acceptable to allow these products to be, continue to be sold in their jurisdiction. And we have made tremendous gains in this county to make the entire county free of these products." So I urge you not to become the exemption that the industry will capitalize on in the efforts that they're making to block legislation at the state level. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brendan O'Connor. And so I'd be willing to bet that all these, like, kids who we're talking about who've been smoking have Juul products. And Juul products are sold in 7-Elevens and gas stations. I think that, that, well, first of all, that's not part of a local business or any kind of really vape community. It's kind of like a, like, a mass. It's a chain dispensary place, basically. And I think that it should, like, if you go to, like, VIP, they have Juul, but like, I guarantee you, if you look at their receipts, it's like, not Juul that gets sold the most. I don't actually know, because I don't work there. But, you know, I think that if you grandfathered them in, at least, where they're allowed to sell what they've been selling, that, you know, it wouldn't really, like, it would affect the vape community, but it wouldn't really affect the people who actually enjoy vaping. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sarah Gronski. I'm 27 years old. Started smoking cigarettes when I was 12. I smoked a pack a day for around seven years. And when I started vaping, I started a very high amount of nicotine. And one of the great things about vaping is that you can lower your nicotine levels, which allowed me to, in time, wean off of nicotine. And so while I've been tobacco-free for two years, I've now been vape and nicotine-free for two months. And I was able to do that because of the modifications I can do with vaping, which is not available for smoking, which is why I was never able to just stop. And I think John pretty much covered everything I had to say, but any health issues that you have that you're taking into consideration should be considered towards a tobacco ban, not a flavor ban. There was so much time spent on the health issues, which really has nothing to do with flavors, has to do with tobacco. And which, I don't, the juice is not technically a tobacco product, so it doesn't make sense to me. But anyway, as long as any 21-year-old can go into Safeway and get raspberry vodka, I think this flavor ban without exemptions is absolutely un-American, like, 100%. Anyone in this room who used the word epidemic tonight should spend some time looking into the worst healthcare crisis that our nation has ever seen, which is the opioid epidemic, and maybe spend some time there. Hi, I realize I've always already spoken. I just wanted to underline one thing, that the only vaping product that my posers have really mentioned was the Juul. Not one word about Smoke, Aspire, Snow Wolf, any of the other brands of vaping products. The products that we carry at VIP are mostly local brands of e-juice from respectable companies who use natural flavorings to add to their juice. The nicotine put into the premium e-juices that we carry is actually from nightshade plants, not even from the tobacco plant at all. They derive it from eggplants, tomatoes, other things like that. So technically, there's no tobacco in them. I just wanted to underline the Juul issue.
And if you could wrap it up, please. Since you have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. I'm Ted Torino for Pride Air VIP Vape Shop. Thank you for the time you take to evaluate these important community issues and your efforts to discern the truth from propaganda. It's greatly appreciated. Scott Godley, Echoing Commissioner at the FDA, has stated, "We said all along, we think that e-cigarettes could be a viable alternative for adult smokers. If you could migrate more adults off of combustible products, that would be a net public health benefit." I oppose this ban because I believe it would take away this powerful public benefit. The right for adults to purchase legal products should never be taken away. I'm touched to see so many people here to express how important flavor is to them. There are many more that couldn't make it tonight. Rebecca Williams, the department lead and one of our community's emerging young leaders right there, has given you, has collected hundreds of letters from your constituents who cannot attend to let you know how important vaping has been to them to quit smoking. Why would we want to reverse this progress? We all share the same goal of keeping these products away from our youth. As a responsible small-business owner that sells legal products to age-verified adults, we take countless steps to prevent youth access. We've been doing this for 16 years. First, although I do believe most buying for minors is done online, we have limits on the amount of nicotine products a person can buy in our store during a sale, thus preventing them from purchasing with the intent to distribute to minors. Second, if we become aware that the labeling of any product is potentially appealing to minors, we discontinue it and ask our manufacturers to change it. Third, every employee is trained on how to check IDs and on the various laws. This is done extensively with new staff members, at and between staff meetings, and regularly on the sales floor. Any time an ID is questionable, we do not accept it. Fourth, we have an ID scanner to check the authenticity of IDs. We invested in this several years ago, and we did this long before Juul or any big tobacco company suggested it to the retailers. I'll wrap it up. We continue to seek out other possible solutions to keep products out of the hands of our youth, but an FDA inspection compliance rate of 100% amongst San Rafael retailers certainly points to the problem not being with retail stores. I appeal to you to allow adults to continue to have a healthy alternative to smoking. Thank you for your time and the excellent service you do for this great city of San Rafael.
Thank you. Any other comments? Perhaps the last.
Good evening. So there are more than me, as you asked last time. Where is everybody? So I'm Pam Granger. I'm the co-chair of the Smoke Free Marin Coalition. The coalition hardly endorses the proposed ordinance, with the exception, as you guessed, for the adult-only locations. We agree with the nexus of all the findings, except the last one. Where we have a problem using, is using the testimony from retailers who've been around for 15 or 16 years. They were profitable and hung around before vaping ever came in place. Now they're benefiting economically because their customers became addicted from traditional tobacco products ahead of time. And they have customers that continue to be, if you've listened to everybody tonight, they're continuing to be addicted to nicotine. There was one woman that said that she's weaned herself completely off. That's not okay with us. Not only would giving an exemption give unfair advantage to, to a few and deviate from what's hoped to be a universal Marin trend, but ignores the great body of evidence that indicates there are significant health problems associated with electronic nicotine delivery devices. It tout flavored e-cigarettes as safe alternative, as if there was such a thing. This is not a way to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. We focus much of our discussion on youth. We're not willing to throw the adults under the bus. There's lots and lots, as the doctor has said, of other ways to, for cessation. If you look at the Smoke Free Marin website, we list them. We have organizations in town that do cessation. Somehow, millions of people have been able to quit using the old-fashioned methods. There are also over-the-counter products. Unlike vaping products, they're FDA-tested and approved. They aren't glamorous. You can't do tricks with them. They don't contain harmful ingredients. They don't blow up and cause injuries, and kids aren't flocking to use them. So keep in mind, we're not taking vaping products away, just the ones that flavor and addict. Thank you.
And thanks for your comments. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public. And I would like to come back to Dr. Willis for just a moment. Thank you for staying with us. Like, like us, you've heard many comments from our community. I'm wondering if, if any of them have persuaded you to change your, your recommendation to us to adopt the ordinance and what will become an ordinance, with the exception provided, and there was no exception. Have you changed your view at all?
I have not changed my view.
No surprise, I guess, but I did want to, I did want to check in with you, because we're faced with making a decision, taking into consideration many of the comments made by, by many of those within our community. There were a number of questions, and I probably didn't jot them all down, but there seem to be a couple of themes. One was, the benefits derived by vaping outweigh those other consequences. How do you feel about that?
I mean, one thing that I think is really helpful about this conversation was to hear, you know, how many people are really using vaping products as tobacco cessation in their own lives. From a public health standpoint, we rely on various sources of data and information. I'm, I'm thinking about our population as a whole, and I'm thinking about the science, and then this, the stories, and putting all that together. One, I think, helpful piece of data for this, for guiding this, is that in Marin County, we have tobacco rates of about 8% of our community smoke cigarettes, which is, which is one of the lowest in the state. If we assume that, say, half of those individuals, or a third of those individuals are using vaping products for cessation, that might be 3%. We're also seeing in our young people, uses of 30%, right? One in three young people are vaping. Even if a small fraction of that actually uses it as a gateway, as we know occurs, we're, we're compounding, we're actually accelerating the problem that the, that our, that our residents are using vaping to solve. So we need to take into account the fact that so many of the stories we've heard tonight begin with, "I started smoking at," and I'm using vaping to help. What we are trying to do for the future is to prevent that story from occurring in the first place. So, you know, I think from a, from a public health standpoint, and from a community health standpoint, an ordinance that includes no exemption makes a lot more sense. What I'd like to do is work with our community members, as we have, but maybe be even more explicit about it in terms of, what are the options, right, for people who are, who are smoking that want to stop smoking, or people who have stopped smoking and are vaping to continue to be able to access that benefit? One is, one obvious, is that this, this ordinance does not include non-flavored vaping products. So there's still availability of vaping and vaping devices that contain nicotine- So there's still availability of vaping and vaping devices that contain nicotine and can serve in that cessation function. If they're, if flavoring specifically is necessary for that benefit, there are other access points. We've talked about some of them. You know, we're not solving the whole problem here. There are many other ways of access, including on the internet. So the question, I think, before us is, do we, as a community here, want to contribute to that particular issue in our own approach? I think you've also heard, and I hope the grand jury report clarifies that, as, as new information, since this ordinance was written, that there is a movement towards a more holistic and more comprehensive solution where there's no exemptions. And my hope is that that can be taken into account in the decision-making tonight. And maybe just a couple of questions that came up. The energy drink question.
Yes, please. That is, and in fact, that's my first one.
Specifically, you know, targeted to.
If you could.
Anyone who wanted to ask me a question specifically, I'll address those. First, with the energy drink question.
Right.
You know, the, the, the simple answer is that energy drinks are not serving as a gateway to another more harmful product. The flavorings are an enticement to use energy drinks as well. The 27 percent, I think someone mentioned that that was a national figure in terms of the vaping rates. That was, just to clarify, that was our California Healthy Kids survey for Marin County residents. 11th graders was 28 percent vaping on a regular basis, and now you say one in three, which is an estimate. This UCSF study, I think, one of the, someone representing the industry spoke to the, to the age of the study that costed the, you know, obviously, a study that actually attempts to measure the specific financial implications of something as broadly harmful as tobacco in terms of all the different disease conditions it contributes to, is a relatively sophisticated methodology, and we would not expect Kaiser to be able to, be able to summarize that off the top of their head, because they'd be looking at the fractional contribution to heart attacks, and strokes, and cancer, and a variety of other harms that we know tobacco causes. So that 10-year-old study is, remains an important signal for us of the, of the social cost. Were there other questions that came up that you wanted me to answer?
Oh, just a couple, and then others, perhaps we'll have some as well. There seem to be, and it's sort of tied into the question earlier, that at least for, for some, there seems to be some medicinal purposes for vaping, that is, as we discussed earlier, to allow them to transfer, transition from nicotine addiction to perhaps off nicotine, using vaping as a, as a means for doing so. Any idea, I mean, this may be a guess, or maybe you know, how successful that, that cycle is? My impression is, it's not very, but I, I'm still here to learn.
Sir, I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, if you're, if you're, let's say you're addicted to nicotine, be that through cigarettes or vaping, and you're attempting, well, let's say cigarettes, that's probably more logical. You're attempting to, to rid that addiction. So you go cigarettes, vaping will allow me to transition, and now I'm, at the end of the cycle, I am free of that nicotine addiction. How frequently, or what percent, is that a successful conclusion? Or do you find that it never happens, or seldom happens?
I'm not aware of any scientific evidence for that as a, as an evidence-based strategy for weaning off of, of nicotine. It does, you know, it does stand, nicotine is, is an addiction that people struggle with the way other addictions, and it, and it has a relapsing and remitting nature like many other addictions. The fact is that vaping, there are vaping products that do not carry nicotine, and I imagine it's true that some individuals will transition from those that contain nicotine to those that do not, and then when that occurs, that's, that's beneficial.
Okay. A statement was made, which frankly, I think is incorrect, but I think someone followed up with a comment, that there is not a connection between the vaping industry and the tobacco industry. And I think we've seen evidence provided by the grand jury, that that's not the case. If anything, it's moving rapidly in that direction, where tobacco companies are realizing this is their next, their next line of business, enticed by, by the flavor element. As a marketing strategy, I can, I can understand where that might be effective from, from their standpoint. Do you think otherwise, or do you think you do agree?
It was, it's, it's completely clear that the tobacco industry is always looking for new markets. When your, when your business is, is a product that, that, you know, ends people's lives early, you have to have a way of getting new people in. And, you know, it's, to me, it's a perfect example, sort of playing both sides, right? They're selling products that make people addicted to nicotine, and then they sell products that are intended to be helping people with that addiction. And the, the concrete example is Altria, that was mentioned. 35 percent, you know, billion-dollar sale to buy 35 percent of Juul. Altria's Marlboro cigarettes. So this is, this is big, you know, this is big tobacco. And if it, if it's not clear that it's big tobacco, it's partly because big tobacco is incredibly well-versed and quite savvy in engineering the optics around this, so that their, their influence is hidden.
Recently, and this will be my last open up to the others, but recently went to, to a dinner that included a panel discussion about this issue. And I, I did learn a few things. I was impressed, having listened to several discuss the, the influence of nicotine addiction as a result of vaping. I was left with the impression, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I was left with the impression, those that smoke cigarettes do so one at a time, and they'll set it aside. My, my father died of emphysema, so I witnessed this, but they'll set it aside and have another one, you know, a few minutes later, or five minutes later, or half an hour later, whatever it might be. But there is a, there is a conclusion point. You're, you're done with that particular cigarette, and now you've got to do something to initiate it. However, with vaping, which I, I understood someone there to say, on the panel, to say that the vaping contained up to two packs of cigarettes. I don't know how you measure that, but that's what I was told, we were told. And, but the interesting part is vaping has no logical conclusion until you get to the endpoint of the, you know, the fluid. And so therefore, it seems to be much more addictive, to me, and, you know, maybe I'm wrong about this, but it seemed to be far more addictive in the end. And now we have those that are trying to, to rid themselves of the addiction. Cigarettes maybe would be much easier than, than the vaping experience, but again, frankly, I don't have that experience, so I don't know. So I'll ask you. What do you think might result in the greater addiction?
I think it's true that whether it's one pack or two, I think we're sort of still, it's between one and two for a Juul pod, in terms of the nicotine relative to cigarettes. You're right, the, a cigarette, as, as a habit, and this has been studied, is something that people will habitually do in certain situations at certain times of day, and it's one cigarette. That sort of natural control is not, not in place with vaping devices. And a pod can be just, you know, puffed upon until, until it's empty, which would be the same as smoking, literally, if one did that. It would be the same as smoking one to two packs at once, over the course of, you know, an hour or so. So the, the possible dose response of, for an individual, for a young person who's actually vaping on a regular basis, the amount of nicotine from a dose perspective is much higher than they may not, may not realize, as opposed to what they would know they were consuming if it was cigarettes.
Let me just ask the staff. There were some other questions, any other questions that you focused on that you'd like to address, and then, no? Okay. Don't go away. Other questions?
Question?
Sure.
It's actually for staff. So one of the comments was talking about if we have stores exempted here, that additional stores could come in, and I was trying to find in the ordinance, but it's, it's quite long, but eager to ask you, is there a way to have it remain just the three stores that currently exist?
I was bringing this question up with our standing city attorney here. The ordinance does not say that right now. If the council did want to put some sort of cap on it, we could look at that. It's something we'd need to do and come back. I think Lisa felt like, and I'll let you speak for yourself, but that it wasn't a small enough change, that we would just be able to make it tonight, but that it's something that we could look into and see what the impacts would be.
Yeah, I think it merits some study, and not something that should be done quickly. And I certainly wouldn't recommend doing it tonight, but it would be something we could look into and bring back at a future date.
Okay. And then the other question I had, as I understand it, the smoke stores that exist in Marin County, there are the three in San Rafael, and I think there's one in Mill Valley, and I know that other jurisdictions have passed this without any exemptions, but to my knowledge, they actually don't have smoke stores. So that might be why the exemption conversation didn't happen in those jurisdictions. Is that your understanding?
I'll start off. I think Ethan's going to want to chime in as well. That's my understanding, and the amount of research that I've done. I looked at several of the other staff reports of other jurisdictions. I have Larkspurs in front of me. They list gas stations, Bevmo, Lucky Supermarket, and a car wash, and those last three don't sell electronic cigarettes, so it was really the gas stations that did. So, and I also did some of my own research, just trying to see what other stores are available, and I just found the same ones that you did.
Andrew. Also.
I can clarify.
Please, yes, if you would.
There was a tobacco store in unincorporated Marin County. Yeah, in Strawberry, yeah.
Just kind of along the same lines. How many tobacco outlets do we have in San Rafael, the city of San Rafael presently?
As of 2018, it was 54, as of the start of the year.
And do you know, and I'll pivot back and forth between Dr. Willis and you, do you know how many tobacco outlets there are in the county?
I'm looking to staff. Ninety, 190?
190?
I'm asking the unincorporated county, that is where the Marin sheriff would have jurisdiction, as opposed to San Rafael police. Do you happen to know, because I'm, I want to understand better whether or not the enforcement efforts that have taken place, we know what the FDA enforcement efforts were, but I don't want to be misled by that, nor do I want to mislead others. Do you know whether or not the enforcement efforts by the Marin County sheriff, where violators were found, occurred in San Rafael city limits versus unincorporated Marin versus other jurisdictions?
Yeah, I was asked by staff to find out how many illegal sales were made and citations were issued for the city of San Rafael, and there were 10 in the last three years.
Okay.
But many more violations have occurred and citations issued for other jurisdictions in the county.
Okay.
But 10 in San Rafael.
Do you happen to know whether any of those 10 were, any of those 10 violators were among the three potentially exempt stores?
No, they weren't.
They were not? Okay. Great, thank you. So of the 54 tobacco outlets, we're considering potentially, in this ordinance, creating an exemption, it would benefit three of those 54 if those three chose to avail themselves of the two requirements that we've set forth in the exemption. One is to require that folks who enter the premises be age 21, and the other is that their sales would have to be at least 50 percent tobacco-related sales. So are you aware of any more than the three stores that might qualify under the terms of the exemption?
There's a third criteria, which is you have to verify the age upon entry.
Correct.
And so of those three, all three, as they currently exist, would not meet the exemption. They would need to make small changes in order to be exempt. Of the other stores, most of them would have to make quite significant changes to their current business practices in order to be exempt. An example of that would be a gas station having to do major changes to their, their business process.
You mean like discontinuing the sale of gasoline?
Like discontinuing the sale of gasoline.
I think we'd all agree that few stores, other than the three, might qualify under the terms of this exemption. I too, particularly given the comments we heard, particularly from the young people in our audience, I too am concerned about the possibility that if we agree to a ban with an exemption, that retailers might pop up, as they have attempted to in Oakland, or come from other parts of the county, and opportunistically join the ranks of the businesses already in, in San Rafael. I think there are easy ways we can address that, so as to prevent more retailers from popping up, and we really can limit the scope of the exemption to those businesses currently in place who rely upon the sale of tobacco, who apparently do a good job in terms of enforcement. I don't think I have any other questions.
John, do you?
Question. To our city attorney and to others that might be able to answer. If, if there is a, a ban with an exemption carve out per the, the three requirements, would we fall into, for lack of a term, an equal protection issue to other retailers that would say, "You're taking away from my business, but still allowing a product to be sold." Take, for example, the difference between a gas station where somebody comes in to want to buy gas, they buy their, their menthol cigarette, or their Skoll Wintergreen, and chips, and soda, and now that they can't get those other than the three places where we're saying they are available, they lose that potential sale of the other products, even if they weren't offering the, the flavored tobacco products. Would that vendor, would that merchant have some sort of claim to say that we're impacting their ability to do business in favor of another?
They, I think they might have a claim, but I think that the analysis that would be used for that kind of a classification would be, a court would be looking for a rational basis for that classification. And our research is that, has shown that it's likely that an adults-only type exemption would be a rational classification that, that could be upheld. So it's, it's not that there's no classification, but just under the standard a court would be looking at. It, it, it's our opinion that it would pass that standard.
Okay, okay. I don't have questions, but I'll have comments later.
Yeah. Mary Beth?
I have a, a follow-up question to that. I'm not clear on the, on the adults-only exemption. In your equal protection analysis, the owner of some other store could demonstrate that that owner sells these products only to adults. What, what is the nexus between having a premises where there's only adults versus a premises where purchasers of this product are checked for identification to ensure that they are also adults?
Well, I think, I think it's just a matter of degree, and it's a policy decision for the council, how they want to structure that kind of protection. I think it's reasonable to, to say it's more protective to allow the exemption for a fully adults-only store, but that's a distinction the council could make.
Thank you.
We got a question. I was looking, and you can help me, I know, because I wasn't able to find it. The county did not have an exemption, I believe, for Tilford, and then came back with an exception to 2020. I'm positive about that. Tell me about the county's process to, to agree, since you're so, so, so heartedly opposed, and with Mr., perhaps Dr. Monk, making reference to a setback. What convinced them that that was, them being supervisors now, based on their experience? What convinced them that that was an appropriate course of action?
To not include the exemption?
Well, I maybe have it right, but I, I'm wrong, but I thought that originally, they didn't have an exemption, and then they came back, got some plaque from, I think it's Tilford, am I correct about that?
Right.
In Strawberry. And I think they, they carved out an exception for Tilford until 2020. That's, that's the impression I have, maybe I'm wrong. That's the impression I have.
The, I think the conversation there was based on, having heard the public health merits and understanding the public health justification for an ordinance that did not include exemptions. I hope that piece has been made clear here. But there was a concern, just from a, from a small business friendly. But there was a concern, just from a small business friendly standpoint and from the retail environment standpoint and a good faith standpoint, that it was unfair to simply require that they stop selling flavored tobacco products the moment the ordinance went into effect. Because as a business, they needed a process for, you know, actually working through the inventory that they had and to reorganize their business model to find ways to continue to make profit without causing the harm of flavored tobacco products. And that was the reason that that was extended. That was an extension over one, you know, one year. And that, and those that were not in that special category had six months.
And thanks for that clarification. I do think that their business is exclusively tobacco. It's not exclusively tobacco, but exclusively either tobacco or vaping. I don't know if they even vaping, do they have vaping?
They have a few vaping products.
But it's primarily tobacco products.
It's primarily tobacco products. And, you know, I think it's also an important point for this, for this community is that where we're talking, again, we're talking about flavored tobacco products. So any of these businesses are selling a broad range of products. Flavored tobacco products being one, small subset, one that we're very interested in from a public health standpoint because of its unique contribution to the epidemic that we're facing. So Tilfords, for example, we were able to determine that, you know, they said about fifteen to twenty percent of their profits were related to that specific subset, and we're able to shift away from that.
Yeah, and thanks for the clarification, I appreciate that.
One more question here. And I'm taking this to probably an illogical conclusion. But if a ban was instituted on all products, from the way I understand the ordinance is written, from a retail distribution standpoint, would that also include, I'm just thinking, would that also include delivery of products if you didn't have a retail storefront? Or if you didn't offer it in a retail storefront environment, but yet you had it on your premises and you had a delivery service for adults? I can take an example of just saying, okay, so vape no longer allows to sell flavored tobacco, flavored nicotine, flavored Juul products, whatever it is, and they decided to take that off their shelves, but still have their product and offer a delivery service to their clients if they wanted it. Would that be included in our ordinance, or would that be excluded from our ordinance? Did I stump ya?
John, I think the answer, the short, the simple answer is that the delivery of tobacco-containing or nicotine-containing products is already regulated, so that may not be an issue here. In other words, I don't think that such delivery takes place.
But if you can order it online, how is it coming to you?
Oh, you're talking about vaping?
I'm just talking, I mean, online, well, I'm talking about that's a delivery. So if I, if VIP has an online website as well for their product, and you can buy it, and they will send it to you or deliver it to you, how is that any different than going to the internet and buying it and having Amazon or FedEx deliver it to your doorstep?
We're just dealing with retailers here, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if it is no longer considered a retailer, so they're not selling it from a retail standpoint across the counter to somebody, but they still have that product, how is that different from online retail? If they're, if they're not, if a person's not walking into the store to buy it, but they're getting it from that provider that's in San Rafael, is that covered as well?
My guess, under the ordinance, it doesn't, it doesn't cover. And therefore, it's permitted. And the logical extension would be marijuana delivery. At least, it's logical to me. And therefore, it's not prohibited. But I'd be interested in their comment, but that's.
Mr. Marin, that's not, that's not what the ordinance says.
But it talks about retail.
No, it says, sale to minors prohibited. Section eight point fifteen point one hundred.
For a retail establishment.
No person, business, or tobacco, no person, business, or tobacco retailer, no person shall offer, offer to sell or permit to be sold any tobacco product to an individual without requesting and examining identification. Establishing the purchase age should be twenty-one years or greater.
I don't know, let's let the experts, I'm just guessing.
What's this?
So I'll attempt to answer this one. So eight point one five point two hundred requirement for a tobacco retail permit. In order to sell tobacco in San Rafael, you need to have a tobacco retail permit. And that section says that it's unlawful for any person to act as a tobacco retailer without first obtaining and maintaining a valid tobacco retail permit pursuant to this chapter for each location at which the activity is to occur. No permit may be issued to authorize tobacco retailers at other than a fixed location. Parapathetic, parapathetic. Tobacco retailing and tobacco retailing from vehicles are prohibited. Permits are valid for one year. Each tobacco retailer must apply for the tobacco retailer's permit or for the renewal of the tobacco retailer's permit. At the same time, the applicant applies for or renews their city business license.
So if they have, if they have a license in place on that now, and they do not sell over the counter, but they take online orders and send out via US Mail or FedEx or whatever, is that included in that? Or not? Yeah, the question is, and again, if we're gonna do something, I wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way. Would it be, would it be for a person who, or a company that already has a tobacco license in the city of San Rafael? And they no longer, you know, we did an outright ban of this, and they no longer sold these products on it from a retail storefront, but they have, like so many other businesses have, an online presence. Would they, without delivering it by vehicle or anything like that, would they be allowed to sell that via online and have it shipped to the address locally, as would any other product? And I don't know the answer to that, but is, would they still be able to do that in our ordinance?
Well, I think what I'd recommend is that if you want to say that, that you say that. I don't think it's that clear.
Right, right.
And, you know, so if you don't want it to say that, then make that clear. And if you do want it to say that, make that clear. That's, that would be the best thing to do, because I think the way it's written, it's not really clearly contemplating that situation.
I just think with the increase of online sales and online distribution of all products, that it's kind of the logical progression of where these things might go. And in looking at, and that's a question that I have, and I believe you've answered it, so I will save others for comments.
Good, thanks. Any other questions? In which case, do we have concluding remarks and a motion with regard to this item? Starting with, whoever wishes, anybody wish to step up? Kate, go.
I guess I'll start. First of all, thank you all for coming down this evening, especially the personal stories. We always appreciate hearing from people here. And thank you, Dr. Willis, for coming down, because when we first started talking about it, we all looked at each other and said, we do not have the medical expertise. So we appreciate you filling that out. One thing that you said, Dr. Willis, really struck me, and that's, it's not a problem of retailers, it's a problem of demand. People want the product, and I would add to that, a problem of access. And so for me, addressing those issues is what's key. And I think the online access is a big issue, too. And we can't regulate the online access. I think you had some good points there. I think people can go online, and purchases and the stories that were told about parents purchasing their products for their kids, that's a whole other conversation that, for me, I'm not even sure how we'd have a policy that regulates how parents interact with their kids around illegal smoking products. So I continue to believe that the carve-out directly and effectively balances what we're trying to do. I think we've written it very narrow. Appreciate the city attorney's office, and I think Vice Mayor McCullough helped write that. So it is narrow, and we wouldn't have, I would absolutely want us to have included the additional conversation we talked about and having it limit it to the ones that can meet those three objectives. And I'm really been pondering the whole suggestion that if we don't also have a hundred percent ban, if we include the exception, that it's somehow minimizing what's going on in Marin County. And I, you know, for me, it was not as a compelling argument. I really believe in what VIP, and they've done a great job of representing themselves. We have the data that shows that they have not been selling to younger folks, that it's a product that adults obviously want. We had a whole roomful of adults, two different nights, that came and said that they wanted it. And it's interesting, because up here, we have a lot of lenses through which we look at these policy decisions. It's not just a health lens. And you provided that really articulately for us. But in addition to me, it's these other lenses in terms of having small business owners have their successful business, having the adults in our community have access to products. So for me, my motion would be to come back, I guess, with additional verbiage regarding the three, or whatever we talked about, having a limit of the number of outlets that would be available.
Let me, let me just comment for a minute on the process and see if this makes sense. We really have a primary issue, which is the banning. A sub-part of that is the exemption. So I would suggest that we break this up a little bit. We talk first a motion about the, as, in our staff report, I'm not sure it's recommended, but as it's presented, with regard to the banning issue itself. Recognizing that that may be followed by a second motion to either include or exclude, or exclude, since it's already included, exclude, motion to exclude the banning. So think in terms of, okay, are we gonna be individually in favor of the broader issue? And then we'll address the second part, just so you know where we're.
Yeah, no, and then I'll further clarify, thank you for that. Absolutely agree, we need to reduce, I mean, the numbers of the vaping numbers having to do with the youth, to me, are eye-opening, to say the least, which is why I really wanna look at the access. So to answer your question, I guess it would be, yes, I would support a ban, but I would also support an exemption.
Well, we'll take that, just to simplify it some. Because if the first motion doesn't pass, the second is moot. You understand what I mean?
Can I just, just for that process point of clarification? I think it's, in terms of many of the supporters of the ban, their support is contingent, myself included, on having no exemptions. So there would be that second, there's almost limited value from a public health standpoint in the yes and the yes versus a yes and a no.
And I respect your opinion, but we've heard that, and we'll take that in consideration. That's, that would not be a factor in our decision that we have to make, which is either with or without if we initially.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify the process in terms of the ordinance being one ordinance versus two, okay.
That's, I appreciate your opinion. It is divisible, though. Other questions, comments?
Yeah. So obviously, there's, this is a difficult topic to discuss and difficult situation for us to be, to be dealing with right now. My take on this from the beginning is that I believe that this is best handled at the state and federal level and to determine whether or not they want to ban the products altogether. And while I appreciate Dr. Willis's input here and his concern that leaving things to the state and federal level usually takes too long, this is an industry that is, that is still in its infancy stages, and changes are happening dramatically. Juul itself is a company started in 2015. We're basically talking less than three years ago, and they already, you know, have a huge market capitalization. They are thirty-five percent owned by Altria. And all major tobacco companies have some stake in some sort of e-cigarette or vaporizing device product. They, Juul accounts for seventy percent of the e-cigarette market share. I mean, so we can't just say that just because that, that product is not offered in an individual store, that that's not where most of the people are getting it. In a survey that was done by the Truth Initiative in just last year, found that eighty-nine percent of the adolescents who attempted to buy Juul online succeeded. So the rules are in place, the laws are in place to prohibit these things, and it's still happening. So we know there is an issue above and beyond the fact that there are flavored tobaccos. And the FDA is acting, and they're acting fairly quickly. In just September of 2018, the FDA sent letters to Juul Labs and the other manufacturers, giving them sixty days to lay out their plans to address the widespread youth products. And if they fail to comply, FDA may remove some or all of their flavored products that may be contributing to the rise of youth in the market. So the FDA is acting fairly quickly on this. And in fact, in November, so six months ago, just six months ago, sixty days after the FDA's ultimatum, Juul announced that it would stop accepting retail orders for mango, fruit, cream, and cucumber Juul pods in compliance with the FDA's investigation. So the industry, as it's growing and learning, and the regulatory bodies that are watching this are acting on it. And I don't believe that something that started three years ago and we're already seeing the removal of these pieces is slow action. I think that this is, this is being seen both domestically and internationally. I wish that some of the stuff that's already been imposed, we talked about these, these studies from the Royal Academy of Physicians. Well, it's, they might like that a little bit better over in the European Union and England, because over there, they restrict the nicotine content in their vaping pods to, I believe it's at like two percent or even, even less compared to what, you know, the five percent that it is in the United States. So, you know, when we're, if we're gonna use those statistics, we need to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. So, you know, if the physicians over in the UK and in the European Union are saying this is a better product, it's also because it's a lot lower dose than what's allowed in the United States. And maybe that's a direction that the FDA should be going as well, and I would assume they probably will. Is, Juul tried to go to Israel, and Israel banned it altogether because of their, their level of the nicotine that was in the product that they wanted to put into Israel was higher than what was allowed there. So this is, this is something that is moving very rapidly. And I think we, I personally think we need to give that the time, because everybody's on top of this, everybody's working towards the same goal, reducing nicotine addiction, reducing the use of tobacco products. And we often talk about here what our charge is in the city and where we can make the largest impact. And I personally don't believe that this is one of them. If the product becomes illegal, then we'll support that. While the product is still legal, I can't, I can't support a ban in any shape, way, shape, or form for someone accessing, especially because the, what we're trying to accomplish here, or at least what we're attempting to try and accomplish here, is to reduce youth access to this. And it's clearly shown that closing down or banning retail establishments that sell this is not going to reduce youth access to it. Especially when eighty-nine percent of the folks who tried to get it online as adolescents were successful to get it online. So fix that problem, and we'll have a lot, we'll have a lot easier time addressing every, everything else that's here. I also feel that we are going to set ourselves up as a city to look at, look at other of our merchants and our business industries to, to have a claim against us that says that we're separating them out. You know, if there's only twenty, twenty, you know, establishments in the entire, entirety of unincorporated Marin compared to fifty-four in the city, it's a little bit different. And if Fairfax has none, or Cormodera has none, then it's easy for them to, to put forth a ban and not have any carve-outs. So we're addressing something that's a lot different than everybody else. And so I don't think you can put us in the same, the same, look at us in the same vein as those other, of the other places. And then, and lastly, I really do think that if, if this goes through, for us to remain consistent in what we're saying, that we need to, as a city, reevaluate our recreational adult-use cannabis policies to exclude the, the distribution, delivery, and sales, even though we don't have a retail establishment of any flavored cannabis products that can be used as well. Because I just think we're being completely hypocritical if we're. Because I just think we're being completely hypocritical if we're saying one is better than the other and we'll accept, we'll accept our youth to get access to Girl Scout cookie cannabis, but we won't allow them to get access to melon-flavored vaping products. So I won't be supporting either of, either of the proposed ordinance ban outright or with the exemption.
Well, I'll take exception. Quite frankly, I think that if our community expects us to wait for the feds and the state, I think we're mistaken. When we can act to improve our situation as a city, we should do that. And, you know, I think we've all experienced feds and the state and with varying, I suppose, outcomes. But I, for one, after the staff report and after the considerable input from the community, I think it's incumbent upon us to take the action that our community expects of us. Now, that may, expectation may be different from individual to individuals, but I don't think that anyone expects us to sit here and go, well, let's wait for the feds. I'm not going to do that. I am impressed, certainly, and thank you, Dr. Willis, for coming this evening and spending considerable amount of time. I think you've been clear in your message from the health standpoint overseeing the impacts to the county. I've also seen the grand jury, I've seen the number of, received input from a number of doctors, I think we all have some this evening, some by email. I've received a number of emails as well from parents that are concerned about this. And I'm sort of a swing vote here in some ways in terms of one that I received. And it struck me, and I just received it today, and it's not as profound, quite frankly, as many of you presented, but it hit me. So Phillips, what are you going to do about this? It is addressed to me and maybe others received it as well from a resident in San Rafael. I'm a San Rafael resident, mother of four daughters, and Sun Valley and Davidson Schools, nine through 13 years. Old writing to express my grave concerns regarding the sale of flavored vapes in San Rafael. I am strongly opposed to any and all sales of flavored vapes. Flavored vapes are harmful to young people and lead to stronger addictions. Whatever perceived benefits flavored vapes bring to the adults are greatly outweighed by the detriment of effects on the young people in San Rafael. We do not, in caps, need nor want these to be in the proximity of our youth and families. Please vote no. I was struck by that because I too am a parent, a parent of three. This individual is dealing with the issue timely and I'm struck by her plea. Am I going to say, well, let's wait until, quite frankly, John, am I going to wait until the feds act to this mother that's concerned with the four daughters? No, I'm not. Furthermore, do I think that this measure, as eloquently once again expressed by Dr. Willis, is clear. The flavored element leads to more of our youth in our community to addiction. Who thinks that's a good thing? There may be some buy, standby benefits, I'm trying, benefits in certain instances, but do I conclude that those few instances overwhelm the, those that become addicted because of the vaping particularly? No, I'm not convinced of that. I think we have a net negative result and impact on the youth in our community. I think that a number of our community members, some still here and shaking their head, are responsible individuals that have looked at this long and hard rather than one individual experience in, let's say, one of the organizations or businesses. I'm impressed by your input and the thoughtfulness that you've presented this evening. I'm in favor of a ban. I hope that it's an influence to others within our community. Certainly, we're being influenced by the county and many of the other communities that have already taken this step. Why has it taken us so much time? We want to make sure we do it right. So I'm not going to say that that's necessarily a bad thing for us to have done, but I think it would be a mistake for us not to act upon it now with the input that we have, the staff report, the research we have, and I've received and access to, as I'm sure many of you did, a lot of the research. And I'm comfortable with my conclusion that it's in our best interest of this community to exercise this ban in the interest of our youth. Anyone else? Please.
I support the goal of the flavored tobacco ban, but I have real misgivings. In fact, I'm, beyond misgivings, I'm very skeptical that it'll have anything more than an extremely modest impact on the stated goal, which is to limit youth access to these products. We've already acknowledged in our discussions here this evening that a very small fraction of youth who get attracted to and start using flavored vaping, flavored tobacco vaping devices, get it directly from retail stores. And that's what we're talking about here this evening. Do we ban the sale of these things from our retail stores? So while I think the goal is laudable, I'm just not convinced we're going to accomplish much with this ban, which is why, while it's worth trying something, I think it's also important to protect the retailers who are playing by the rules and who are doing everything right and who have not been found to be in violation of the rules to limit youth access to these flavored tobacco products. So I would, I would support the ban, but only if an exemption came with it.
Mary Beth, do you have any comments?
I have a great deal of comments and I will hold them, though, for the discussion of the exemption.
Okay.
I support the ban. When it comes time for the exemption, I will be heard.
So a motion would be appropriate, like I said, sequentially, if everybody's okay. I think we ought to talk about the ban, let's decide if we're going to put a ban in place and then with the carve-out for the exemptions to follow up, up or down. So a motion would be appropriate.
Well, I thought, I thought Kate was very articulate in how she attempted to frame the motion earlier. Are you just looking for a motion on whether or not to ban?
Well, the first step is we have a recommendation from staff in the staff report, whether or not we're going to accept the recommendation of the staff report. That includes an exemption. So the second part, for clarity, since the second part of the issue, assuming that passes, the staff report, the recommendation, the ordinance, etc., assuming that passes, that gets us through step one. Step two will be another motion with regard to the exemptions. Unless you want to do it differently, you maybe want to pull it out and see where the vote goes. You can do it one or two ways, I don't care.
Well, I think it probably makes more sense to adopt the global prohibition and then to discuss whether there should be an exemption to that prohibition. That's more logical. So I would move that we adopt the ordinance as presented by staff, however, omitting section 8.15.10 subsection C entitled exemptions.
So you've gone the other way, then?
I've gone, I've gone in what I think is the more logical way in saying, we are adopting a prohibition against the sale or offer for sale of flavored tobacco products in San Rafael. We're going to adopt that, I'm moving that we adopt that comprehensive prohibition. Then, once we have adopted that, we will take up the issue of whether we should create an exemption to that comprehensive prohibition. That's the more logical approach.
Well, it's fine, it's fine either way. So your, your, your motion is with regard to adopting the recommendation of the staff with the exception of what the section is, eight, something or other.
Right, I'm looking specifically at the language of the proposed ordinance and I would omit the section that creates the exemption.
Yeah, I thought I highlighted it, actually, but I guess I maybe didn't. What is the ordinance number? I'm looking for it myself.
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen what, though? Is it a 200?
Division two.
Application?
Eight point one five.
Two hundred. So with the, no, that's not happening. Where is the exception? Eight fifteen what? Jim, do you know?
Yeah, eight point one five, point one one zero. And then it's section C. So the section is called prohibition against sale or offer for sale of flavored tobacco products, and then subsection C is the exceptions.
Correct.
Would another way to be, to see if there's a motion for the existing and then do it the other, I guess I'm just getting confused. We haven't quite done it this way before. I don't follow what we're trying to do.
It's going either, it's going one way or the other. We end up in the same result.
Well, if we make a motion for the current.
I would, I would make, I personally would make a motion to accept the ordinance as presented. If you want to further modify that, let's say, for example, exclude C, which is the exemption, that would be the second motion. And that would be the motion to exclude or modify. And if there's anything else you want to add, I would do it that second time.
Mr. Mayor, could I recommend, I think you should make a motion that fully encompasses the ordinance you want to adopt, whether that's with the exemption or without. If it does, if it's with the exemption and it doesn't pass, then you can vote again on an ordinance without the exemption. I don't think you can really do it in two stages.
Well, except you got it before us with the exemption in there.
I know, but I'm just saying that if you want to make a motion, you can make a motion to vote to adopt the ordinance without the exemption and see if that passes, or you can make a motion to adopt it with the exemption. But I don't think you can.
Do it in steps.
Do it in two steps.
Well, sure we can, because there could be a follow-up motion that says with regard to the ordinance recently just passed, we could exclude C. Eight fifteen, one eleven, C.
But I think you want the, you want the council members to vote on the ordinance they want to adopt. And if they don't want to adopt the ordinance without the exemption, then they shouldn't be voting on the ordinance unless the exemption's there.
Mr. Mayor, we have what appears to be a motion that's made by my colleague, Council Member Bushy, and that motion was to, to move passage of the ordinance without the exemption. That's the motion I heard.
Correct.
That is, in fact, the motion that I have made with the understanding that the topic of the exemption would be coming up later. If we're going to do this in one go, then I would like to be heard on the exemptions. So how are we going to proceed?
I would, I would prefer a motion with regard to the staff recommendation, including the ordinance, recognizing we're going to follow that with, may follow that with, if there's a motion in second, to exclude from that this exception. It gets to the same place. You can either, you can either exclude it in your motion and we'll take action on that, or you can accept it as it is, recognizing there'll be another motion to pull it out. We get to the same place. I don't, either one. You decide. Whichever is your better.
I'm happy to make a motion. I'll be the sacrificial lamb here if it breaks the impasse.
How are you anticipating sacrificing yourself?
Well, here's the.
No second, it dies for lack of a second, and then we start over.
Exactly. I think that's easiest.
Okay, so we allow it to die for lack of a second? Okay.
Well, no, wait, wait, wait. Because if that's your motion with the exclusion of the exemption C, there are no exceptions as recommended by some, I'll second that.
Okay. It's moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Would you please restate that motion for the record? Thank you.
Why would you need that? Go ahead, Mary Beth.
My motion, I move that the council adopt the ordinance as proposed by staff with the exception that subsection C of section 8.15.110 be omitted. The omitted section is entitled exemptions.
And I second that motion.
And can I just make, just for the city attorney, a clarification that we're passing the ordinance to print and not adopting the ordinance this evening?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
With that correction? That's my motion.
Perfect.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
No.
Councilmember Gamblin.
No.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
No.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, the matter fails. Two, three. Three, two. Is there a follow-up, or another motion with regard to this matter?
Well, yes. I move that we pass to print the ordinance as presented, which would include, of course, exemption C, subject to the additional restrictions that we've discussed this evening. So, and those restrictions would be designed to ensure that only the businesses currently operating in San Rafael who meet the exemptions would be able to take advantage of the exemption in this ordinance. And what I have in mind specifically, but perhaps there's a better way to accomplish it, is at the, as of the effective date of the ordinance, a compliant, a business would have to be compliant with the exemption and would have to be operating and would already have to have a San Rafael business license.
May I say something, Andrew, just on that piece there?
Yes.
Ethan, if I'm correct, there's nobody in complete compliance right now. So that if we pass this to print, came back two, two weeks later and adopted the ordinance at the date.
There's a six-month delay.
Six-month delay. But you're, but what you're saying is that they would have to be, so if a retailer came in now and applied for a permit, they would be in that group and they would have six months to comply, or is it?
Let me clarify. That's a fair point. What I thought was, businesses that would be eligible would have to have a San Rafael business license now. And then six months from now, when the ordinance goes into effect, any business seeking to avail themselves of the exemption would have to come into compliance at that point. So they already had the business license, they're already a San Rafael business in good standing. They would then have to certify that 50% or more of their sales come from tobacco-related products, that they card at the door, and that you must be 21 or older to enter the establishment itself.
So anyone with a?
And then to add on to that, the further restriction addressing the concern that you raised, which is that this ordinance should be further modified to prohibit the online sale or fulfillment by any of the compliant retail establishments of flavored tobacco products.
I think if, I wouldn't mind seeing a vote on whether you are in favor of that concept, but I think I would really recommend that we bring back an ordinance for you to look at with those terms in it. It's, I would say that we don't have precise enough language to add tonight to actually do a first reading.
So are you, are you recommending that a motion be made, that an ordinance be drafted and brought back for our consideration along the lines as I've just described?
Yes.
Should I make that motion?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Mary Beth.
I have a question for Councilmember McCullough. Is it your intent that any business duly licensed in San Rafael that in six months can demonstrate items one, two, three would be eligible?
Correct, but only if they presently, that is now, has a San Rafael business license.
So anybody with a, anybody with a business license?
Anyone who has a San Rafael business license presently, right now, who within six months is able to meet the requirements of this exemption would be able to avail themselves of it.
I hate to put the city manager on the spot. Do you have any idea how many business licenses there are in the city of San Rafael?
Total business licenses?
Yes.
I think you've put the city manager on the spot.
But you're on the spot, yeah.
A lot.
A lot. Would it be fair to say there's a lot? We don't know.
I'd say that this is a tiny, tiny fraction of the total.
Well, no, it's not. No, it's not. It's every single one. Every, every business license holder in San Rafael that in six months can do items one, two, and three would be subject to this exemption. That's the way you, that's the way it is, that's the way it is, it has been proposed.
And I think that's, that would be a very small number. You can count on one hand the numbers of businesses that would be able to meet that criteria.
How do you know that?
Because one of the criteria is you have to have at least 50% of your sales be tobacco products, which is, most of the ones that we have that are tobacco retailer licenses are grocery stores and gas stations and that sort of thing. So it's only a small number of stores that actually fit this description. We think we have three at this point that could meet it if they change some of their practices right now.
But, you know, Mary Beth, you make a good point. And to address it, we could further narrow it to not simply San Rafael business license E, but a San Rafael business license. E, but a San Rafael business license E who currently has a tobacco permit.
Tobacco license. That's a good clarification. I would second that clarification.
Let me complicate your life. We saw Tilford and the comments made with regard to the county repositioning, rethinking, and allowing them to continue their business slightly modified and avoid the Oakland catastrophe, which I don't think any of us want. Would you be willing to modify your motion to have a time period from which, like Tilford, which they could operate under these conditions, but expires after, I'm going to say a year?
Transition period.
Yeah, I don't see this as a transition period. If that transition period is going to happen, it'll be imposed by the state if Senate Bill thirty-eight or thirty-nine comes into effect.
Well, it may or may not come into effect, and it may or may not do what we wish. So I don't see any reason for waiting based on those possibilities, since we don't have any idea. I mean, it seems to me that there's, I mean, this is my view now. It seems to me that we've seen sufficient evidence presented to us by reasonable groups that talk about the adverse consequences, be they Oakland, be they Berkeley, be they San Francisco, others that have witnessed this, and we'd be walking right into the same thing for no apparent reason if the businesses, if that's your concern, and I share the business concerns, I'm a business person myself, but at least there is a transition period, as was witnessed by the county, in making their, their period a limited amount of time. If, if, anyway, I think that would be more appropriate, quite frankly. But, now, where do I go with this? Because you've got a motion on the table.
And I, another point of clarification, maybe Lisa, I can ask for your assistance here. So with us not passing the ordinance to print this evening, it'll be coming back for a first reading at an upcoming meeting. We can choose that date today, possibly, if that's something the city council would like to do?
I would recommend that we leave that open.
Okay. And so then the motion would be basically to provide feedback. Essentially, we're providing feedback to staff to come back with an ordinance at a future date.
Would it be a first reading or not? Because it's going back, so it comes back.
Yeah, it would still be a first reading, is that's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, it would be redrafting the ordinance according to council direction to be brought back for a first reading at a future date.
Okay. There is a motion, and I haven't heard other comments. I'm not sure where the sentiment is at this point. Any comments with regard to the motion that's before us?
I had a second on Vice Mayor McCullough's input.
In that case, motion.
Councilmember Bushy.
No.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
No.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
That's interesting. Holy cow.
Take it.
Oh, my goodness. No. And I would be receptive to that motion if it was further modified for a period of time of operations. I'll just lay that out there. Is there such a motion? Got to go somewhere, folks.
Can we, can we make a motion to, for the city clerk and the city attorney, just, we didn't approve any of the ones that were recommended. The actions taken is to provide further direction to staff to come back at a later date with an updated ordinance?
We, we could do that, except if I were a staff, I wouldn't know where to go with that, based on the discussion and the motions and so forth. So I will offer a motion to, to further modify that previously passed to include a timeframe for the permitted activity of one year. And if that doesn't pass, then I don't know what alternatives we have before us other than call it a day. So is there a second regarding that motion?
So Mayor, just to clarify, so that's copying the county action, which was actually a hundred percent banned, but they just happened to have a one-year timeframe to sell out the inventory? Okay.
Right. Yeah, they got inventory, they're going to have to change their business model.
Right, so it'd be following the county with no exceptions for the, no carve-outs.
After, after the one-year timeframe. The exception will be that they can operate as they have been for a year.
Right, so it's a, right.
It's, it's.
It's a similar kind, okay.
And point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, is it your intention that this one-year sort of transition period will apply only to the three currently operating?
Yes.
Okay, so your view is to take the, basically put a time limit on the exemption?
Correct.
Adopt the exemptions as proposed, but put a time limit on them?
Correct.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Really quick, back to you, Madam City Attorney. If we, if we do a carve-out, or if we do this exemption, excuse me, if we have the exemption in there for the three retailers or the ones that could meet that at this point that is listed, and we only do that for a year, do we then, again, reopen, even make it more prevalent for other retailers that are currently doing it, gas stations, grocery stores, or whatever, to come back to us and saying, you're going to ban it, you're going to ban it for everyone, you're only exempting these three, what about us? Should we, if we're going to do an exemption, the 54 people that currently have a license, should they all be given a chance to sell out their inventory in a year as well?
I think that's a policy decision for the council, how you want to frame your ordinance.
And that's why the ordinance is focusing on businesses that 50% or more of the gross receipts come from tobacco. It's a significant business change that they need to implement. So we're willing to give them a transition period to move to something, to healthier options for our constituents.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ethan. Currently, are there any of these three that make 50% of their revenue from the sale of these flavored tobacco products? Or is it tobacco in general?
It's tobacco and tobacco products.
Tobacco and tobacco products. And do they all currently meet that 50% of their sales revenue right now?
From what I have discussed with the businesses, yes.
Including VIP, I presume. Not to center them out, but.
Yeah, of the three businesses, they have all indicated that they make 50% or more of their gross receipts on tobacco products.
If, if this, this motion passes, and we've, we've got the exemption for the three for a period of a year, outline for me the timeframe. We're sitting here, we're going to come back for a second, a first reading, a second reading. How, how long do those businesses that are not exempt if this passes, how long do they have to liquidate their inventory, change their business plan, et cetera? How long, roughly?
I think the, the way that the rest of the ordinance is written is that it goes into effect in six months. It would be six months for the other businesses.
So the other businesses, the smaller businesses, would have six months, maybe still.
That's the way it's currently written, yes.
So it would be six months, and, and perhaps for my motion, this clarity, this would be six months beyond that, then.
As I understand your motion, Mr. Mayor, you'd be adding on six months beyond that just for the businesses that meet those criteria?
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, so everyone has six months, and perhaps the three, if it passes, have up to a year. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
No.
Vice, Councilmember Gamblin.
No.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
No.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, matter fails. What do you want to do? I don't know where to go. What options do we have? Any help, Jim?
The only thing I'm thinking of is that there are a number of questions that came up tonight regarding, you know, which have business licenses, which are tobacco retailers. We can continue to work with the, with the stores that we think would be exempted under the rules that are currently in this ordinance and come back. We always appreciate working with Dr. Willis and others at the, at the county, so we can continue to work with the stakeholders and Dr. Willis and see if we can come back with something that the majority of the council can support. We also thought only about a week ago that SB thirty-eight was, it was in the suspense file, and we thought that it was going to stop. And we just found out recently, as Ethan pointed out, that it's, that it is continuing forward. So a little bit of extra time on this may not hurt from the standpoint of seeing what happens as that goes onto the Senate floor. So should you choose that option, I think there's plenty of things for us to do to try to follow up and answer council questions that came up tonight and work with the stakeholders as we try to craft an ordinance that meets what the council's looking for. So I'd give you that option if that's something that's, that's useful tonight. I'm also happy to continue to work with the individual council members or a subcommittee of the council if you'd like on this topic as well.
Let me ask, let me just ask, try to figure out where to go with this thing. The last motion talked about a period of which, let's focus on the three for the moment, can operate without restriction. Now, that, that period of a year was somewhat arbitrary. I'll grant you that, arbitrary. So my question is, is there a period of time, you feel more comfortable than if you don't like the one year, a period of time in which this phase-out period would be acceptable? Or is just the concept no good?
Just for me, I'm, I'm not wild about the concept because I just have a different view of this. I, I don't believe retailing is at the heart of the problem of youth access to these flavored tobacco products. I think the problem lies elsewhere, but to the extent that there is some nexus, then we should do what we can, which is why I support the ban generally. But I think it's fair to exempt businesses that are responsible actors and who rely substantially on tobacco revenues for their, for their livelihoods. And, you know, maybe that period, if you're, if you're going to press it, the period goes till until it's outlawed by the state. But until such time, those businesses that comply with these very strict exemption requirements should be allowed to continue to operate.
Mary Beth.
And that's why I think our logic differs. Because I don't think what we have heard from every expert in medical and public health who has been here telling us, they're not telling us it's about access. They're telling us it's about the unique features of this flavoring that is uniquely directed and contemplated by this industry to be targeted at young people. It's not about access, it's about the very existence of this particular product because of its unique features. The public health officer from the County of Marin is here, has presented compelling, factual, and medical testimony. The experts from the American Medical Society, from the American Cancer Society, from our universities, from numerous civic organizations are here telling us one thing. This particular type of, of product is so dangerous that we need to completely outlaw it. That's a, a, an extreme position to take, and it's only that when we have this body of experts that come before us and tell us uniformly the exact same thing and recommend one particular course of action. It is startling to me that we would seriously consider substituting our judgment as to what constitutes a public health concern in this county for this esteemed body of experts that have uniformly told us one thing, and that is that this product is a danger to our young people and that we need to remove it from this county. Our neighbors have all, this, five jurisdictions have done the same thing. This is not a, this is not a matter of controlling access to something. It's a unique product that needs to, that we need to stand up and join our neighbors based on the expert testimony that we have received and act as, as recommended. And so that's what, I, I don't see, it's not about access. So the fact that they keep the young people out, that's not the point. The point is that watermelon flavored or whatever it is still exists. And maybe we take this and we go look at our marijuana legislation as well and see if we should apply something to it there as well. But that, but that doesn't mean that this matter tonight, that we've heard hours of testimony on, uniformly from every single expert telling us to do one thing. It, it, it is, it would require a compelling demonstration to act in, not in accord with these recommendations. I understand our businesses, I understand that they are engaged in, in, in what is at the moment a lawful business. They should have some transition time to sell their inventory and accommodate themselves to a different business line. But we have in front of us a, a very compelling record that leads us to really only one action. And I really think that we should take that. And to kick this, we've had two hearings already. We need to make a decision and, and move forward.
Well stated.
If I could just very briefly respond. Mary Beth, I don't disagree with your passion on the subject, and I share it to a large extent, but I take issue in one very important respect. I think the people who've come before us with professed expertise, with, in fact, with real expertise, have expertise on epidemiological cause and effect, but they don't necessarily have expertise on policymaking cause and effect. And that's my worry here. It's one thing to say that if we can eliminate these flavored vaping products, we're going to eliminate a gateway to nicotine addiction independence by our youth. I absolutely agree with that. But no one here has said that if we enact a total ban, as the county has enacted, what impact it's going to have on that nicotine addiction independency? Is it 1%, 5%, 90%? What we do know, and I'm, I'm interpolating the data, is 5 to 15%, assuming it's true, the self-reporting is true, 5 to 15% of youth access to these products is through retail outlets. So we have at least 85% of access coming online from parents from other places. We're not addressing that tonight, and it's not enough for me to say I'm prepared to put people out of business so we can address 5 to 15% of a problem. That's what I worry about. But with all due respect, Mary Beth, I, I agree with the goal here, I just don't think this is the step to achieve it.
Well, that's, that's why, quite frankly, I offered the, the possibility, maybe a midpoint, to, to allow for the businesses to change their model and presumably survive and do well. So we're not putting anybody out of business. I don't see that. I would be hard-pressed. I bet five years from now, we haven't put one out of business. That's my, that's my guess, but I'm probably pretty good at this stuff. And further, furthermore, you, I mean, I'm stopping because Mary Beth said it so well, I don't want to repeat, but I think you've made the points that certainly comes home to me. And if you have sort of a midpoint, which is a period of time, if you agree that flavored tobaccos result in attraction to youth, and it's not a static, it may be 5% now, but who knows where that curve's going to go? It's probably going to go up with, with all the billions of dollars behind it in terms of promotion. You think it's going to stay the same? I, I don't. And if we can do something to maybe direct our, our community in a different, to a different place as recommended by those that Mary Beth cited, I don't care if it's 1%. I mean, I'd prefer to think we are doing more than that, but it's a step in the right direction. So why not take that step? We're not going to have anything that's going to, 100% eliminate.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. This probably isn't going to go anywhere, but I want to throw it out there, just in the spirit of throwing things out there. My whole, my whole take on this was this was not something that, that I felt that the city, this was, this was in our purview to do, and I felt it would be better addressed at the state and federal level. And that's still my take on it. So in, in the spirit of trying to, to get something accomplished here and, to your point of, let's do it a year from the, the ordinance to, you know, pass the ordinance to this year exemption, then it's, then it's complete ban. I would say that I could, I could support, because if the state or the federal government doesn't do anything this year or into, into next year, then, then I don't think that they probably will at any certain time. So I would, I would say that we could put forth an ordinance that would, that would ban the product. ban the product in, in the city of, of San Rafael, but to have that go into effect either 18 months to two years from the date that, that we do it, and no exemptions for anyone, and that would allow all retailers, not just the, the three that are, that are here, that get their, but grocery stores, gas stations, whatever, to, to, to remove everything from their shelves. My, my feeling is that it won't come to play because I do believe that this is going to pass at the state and the federal level prior to that, and that it'll be all taken care of. And if it doesn't, then shame on them for not doing it, and then our ordinance will go into play.
I think that may be a good approach. What if we say, I'm just throwing this out now, what if we say, let's say 18 months? Unless, and I don't know if you want to identify Senate Bill 35 as a, as a point of reference, unless Senate Bill 35 passes, in which case it's returned here for further consideration.
That's, I like the way John framed it. We adopt the prohibition, it goes into effect in 18 months. Our hope is that it is meaningless because it, other, more broadly equipped levels of government will have taken action by that.
The only thing is, we don't know what it's going to say. I mean, by definition, it hasn't passed, so we don't know. I would say that if, I mean, one possibility...
But, we're not going to know what it's going to say, but we'll know what its effect is because they will pass something, and if 18 months, and if 18 months go by and our ordinance still matters, we will know that they haven't done enough. So, we will know that in 18 months, this will be over, one way or another.
That's what I'm saying, we can bring it back. I mean, you could have it...
We don't want to start over again.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's been so much fun.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just clarify? Because I thought I heard Councilmember Gamblin say 18 months for all, all businesses. You're not talking about the, the three that meet certain criteria?
Right. Exactly. I'm saying, I'm saying that, that within 18 months of the date that we pass the ordinance, that all retailers, you know, in the, in the city of, in the city of San Rafael, gas stations, grocery stores, pharmacies, whatever, whatever it is, would, would, the, the ban would be on that, on that...
So, you'd be adopting the ordinance without the exception, but the whole ordinance wouldn't go into effect for 18 months?
From the date that it's done, yeah.
So, just to clarify, it means that the pharmacies, the gas stations, and everyone else could continue to sell these products, so there's basically no ban at all for 18 months versus us having an exception, what Andrew and I have been talking about, is having an exception for just those three, but everyone else is banned?
Correct.
Okay.
A question for the city attorney. Would this fall, would we be able to pass this to print tonight because we know what the words are? We just changed the effective date and we omit subsection C?
I think you would delete subsection C and maybe the final whereas in the findings and change the effective date, and then you could pass it to print.
What about an effective date of January 1st?
2021. That's 18 months, basically. It sounds like a long way away, but that's 18 months.
It's 18 months?
18 months, we do.
Yeah, probably is, probably is.
Which is the, basically the effective date that this is going to go.
So, why don't you give it a whirl?
Okay.
With a motion. Somebody, John, go ahead.
I move that we accept, no, pass the ordinance to print with the change to go into effect 18 months from, or, or is it better just put January 1st?
Just put a date.
January 1st, 2021.
And the exclusion of, yeah, the exception. Do you want to kick that out?
Yeah, we, yeah, there, there's no, there's no...
1-5, 1-1, C. The elimination of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second.
And so, just to clarify, yeah, so that's really more permissive over the next 18 months than what we were already talking about. Okay.
But we do less in the short term, but in the long term...
But it is more, over the next 18 months, where still the products are available at the pharmacies, the drugstores, the gas stations. Okay.
Tilford times 1.5.
I would support an amendment that would allow, that would, to the motion, that would allow that.
I think we have a motion in a second. Am I correct about that?
You do.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
No.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough?
No.
Mayor Phillips?
Aye. Matter carries 3-2. We'll now go on to council members' reports.
Okay, I have, last time we finished late, so I didn't report. Marin Transit, just know the draft budget is out, the final's going to be there in June.
Okay. I'll report out on a couple of things. First, Mary Beth and I selected the balance of the wildfire committee of eight members to be further reviewed by the two of us over the next few days, but we made our initial selection. Want to see where they're, where they live, make sure we've got some dispersion. I put down smart crossing, well, you heard tonight, that the word's at least getting out better than it had. And three, I, I sent an email and got a response back with regard to our pension issue, sort of, Jeff, where are we at? There's a draft, staff's reviewing that now.
The what issue?
The pension. Remember, we have the pension supplementing, looking at the pension, and I understand that'll come back within a few weeks, let's say. Yeah. So, let's see, what else did I have? No, scratch that. Okay, that's all I've got, other stuff, but forget it. Nothing under success or agency, so we shall adjourn.